Before we start the meeting, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, braving the weather. We changed the venue due to a National Grid presentation which I'm sure most of you are here for. And so we didn't know how many citizens would show up and we wanted to make sure there's plenty of room. I think fifteen to twenty people would be a little tight fit at the WCIT. So I think we made the right decision. I'd like to say that the meeting is still a Board of Selectmen meeting and we need to follow our rules just so we keep order in tonight's gathering. We'll be going through all of our agenda items when we go to the National Grid presentation. I ask that you let, please let the National Grid folks just go through their whole presentation before you ask any questions. What we'll do first is we'll let them do the presentation without being interrupted in the flow and also then we'll go to the Board of Selectmen for questions, concerns, and then after that we'll open it up to the floor. Whoever wants to speak is welcome to speak. Two microphones if you can just line up and when you get to acknowledgement from me to speak, just state your name and your address. And then also direct your questions to the Board, to Tom Owen, Town Council, to Rick Stinson, or obviously the presenters. Just do it with a question first, just saying, you know, I'd like to present this question to Brian McGrail for example, and then he may not answer you but the rest of us will. Also, right, time-wise, if, just not that this is like the town meeting, but we need to keep it to some restrictions. We don't want to have people, you know, get in front of the mic for thirty or forty minutes. So if you can gather your thoughts for two or three minutes, that would be great, just for everyone's sake. So tonight, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for November thirteenth, 2017, at the Savings Bank Theater. And the hearing tonight, we have a hearing at For Cafe Italia for modification of all alcohol liquor license.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Motion to go into public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. And Brian, if you want to state your name and also the person you're with, just to introduce yourselves, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The Board, I'm the resident attorney, Brian McGrail, Office 599. North Avenue in Wakefield, here representing Cafe Italia Inc. With me tonight is Tony Oliviero, who is the president and owner of Cafe Italia. The purpose of our being here tonight, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, is for a request for an alteration of an all alcohol license on the premises. Currently, Mr. Oliviero is operating Cafe Italia. I'm proud to say on their behalf that they're going on ten years in downtown Wakefield. They are very popular amongst Wakefield folks. Tony tells me that approximately fifty percent of their business is from Wakefield and fifty percent is from out of town. So they're serving a dual purpose, A for Wakefield citizens and B bringing folks into the downtown area to frequent their restaurant. They currently occupy the first floor of the building at twenty-one dash twenty-three Water Street. And in the basement is a bakery operation that has gone on for years. And upstairs historically was an office use that has been vacant for quite some time. Mr. Santinelli actually, who was the owner of the property, Bob Santinelli, owns a number of properties in the downtown area, had contemplated converting that into residential use. He actually obtained approvals from the zoning board of appeals within the past year or so to do that. And then he was approached by Tony when he was about to do that and Tony said, you know, my business is at this point so successful, I'd like to talk to you about expanding it to the upstairs area. And they were able to consummate a deal. And we went before the zoning board in the summer and they approved the requisite special permit to allow that to occur. And as you're aware, he currently has an all alcohol license and there's a requirement to modify that or alter, an alteration of the premises it's called, to allow the alcohol to be served upstairs. Currently, there are approximately on the first floor, there's just under a hundred seats, it's about sixty-seven, Tony?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight. And upstairs, we anticipate about ninety-nine. So it's quite an expansion. We have submitted a site plan that shows the proposed seating layout of the restaurant. And we also pursuant to this hearing caused a publication to occur in the Wakefield Daily Item on November two. And we also notified Butters, churches, and schools within five hundred feet of the premises as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one thirty-eight. So the downstairs area encompasses approximately twenty-eight hundred square feet. Upstairs is basically a mirror image. There'll be a total of fifty-six hundred square feet with approximately a hundred sixty-seven seats in the entire facility. Tony is very excited about continuing his business in downtown Wakefield and expanding it. He has a wonderful working relationship with his landlord, which I think is great for the downtown area. Bob Santinelli, as I mentioned, owns a number of properties downtown. He has worked hand in hand with Tony throughout this process as far as permitting, licensing, et cetera. Happy to answer any questions that the Board may have, Mr. Chair.
Questions from the Board?
I don't have any questions, but just, I think it's a great plan. It's always nice to see folks and to expand their business in downtown Wakefield, so greatly appreciated. And, you know, I fully support this. I know Cafe Italia is a, unless Steve tells me different, a great track record in the town with the police department and so forth. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't welcome the change. It's certainly comparable to what's going on next door at Harrington's. They have a similar setup with a room upstairs, the bar area. So I think it's great and more power to you. Thanks.
Tony?
I appreciate the investment in downtown Wakefield. We'll take anything we can get. Just curious, what is the anticipated opening date?
Probably within a month. A lot of that's up to the ABCC, once they, assuming you might approve it tonight, then they take their time and work, it's kind of out of our hands, so it goes from here to there and then whenever they approve it.
Thank you.
Ed, what are the expected operating hours?
They would not change and currently, the current license is Monday through Saturday, eleven AM to twelve-thirty AM, Sunday, twelve noon to eleven-thirty AM, eleven-thirty PM.
I would just echo the sentiments of the other Board members. Congratulations to you on, you know, having your business not just survive but thrive. It's exactly what we want to see here and you have a strong track record, which is important. And I think that's, that should be applauded and supported certainly by the town in any way that we can.
Thank you very much.
Yeah?
Certainly supported as long as the plain chop lollipop stand.
Menu? One of my favorite things, so you've got my vote at that stage.
Thank you.
Any further discussion from the public, any questions? What? Dan?
I'm looking to know if this building is fully handicap accessible or off limits?
The first floor is handicap accessible and has handicap accessible bathrooms as is required. The second floor has access via stairs only, however, it does have handicap accessible bathrooms upstairs. So one of the processes that we had to go through was we had to apply for a waiver with the Architectural Access Board in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We did apply and we had a hearing before them in August of this year and they approved the waiver to not require an elevator or any type of access machinery to get upstairs and that was approved. But they did require that the upstairs bathrooms be handicap accessible and that is complied with.
Any other questions? Could have a motion to approve the, let's see, modification of the alcohol liquor license? All in favor?
I move we close the public hearing.
If I could, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have the green cards for the notice I'd like to give to Sherri and thank her for her help with the notice requirements under one thirty-eight. And also pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one thirty-eight, sixteen C, there's a requirement that a finding be made that there's no adverse impact, it's not detrimental to the educational spiritual activities of any school or church. The middle school is within five hundred feet and the ABCC requires that that be voted on and then put in writing by the Board of Selectmen if you would consider doing that. So I can pass these up if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Yes.
Is there no detrimental effect to any schools or religious organizations within five hundred feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Please sign it.
No names?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Public hearing closed, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, man. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is regarding Portobello's, the revocation of abandonment and or non-use of all alcohol liquor license.
I can jump in here, Mr. Chairman, if you so desire.
Sure.
As I mentioned to the Board when we set this public hearing, Portobello's has picked up stakes and left town. They've actually abandoned the entire location. So we have a liquor license hanging out there that hopefully someone else will want to use and those are very important to us in our development of the downtown, number one. And number two, the owner of the property at Greenwood Plaza would like to rent that, lease that property again. And it looks like we have a good Mexican restaurant coming in and I think they'd like to be able to serve margaritas, et cetera, when they do open up. So part and parcel, we need to revoke that liquor license for abandonment and or non-use. The owner was sent certified in regular mail and was not only at his home, but at his business agent that he listed in his corporation and at the location of business and he has not responded to us. So I think this is pretty quick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other discussion from the Board? Any questions? Nothing? Do you think you want to go into the public hearing? Did you go into the public hearing? Okay, we need, right.
Do you want to go to the public hearing?
Yeah.
I move we open a public hearing regarding Portobello's liquor license.
Okay. Roll call?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
I move we revoke Portobello's license for abandonment or non-use.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any from the public? Any comments from the public? I didn't think so.
I move we close the public hearing.
Okay, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And for the record, Mr. Longo, did you second that motion to close the public hearing?
You did.
You did, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Get the mic closer.
Okay. Now the mean of it.
No, I'm stuck around here.
You guys come down. No, we're going to the public one more time too.
Yep.
So next we have National Grid, the grant of location permit under MGLC one sixty-six twenty-two for underground cable project. And... Motion to enter public hearing. Motion to enter public hearing?
So move. Second.
Roll call?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Welcome. Can you just tell us who you are, just so we all can identify the players?
And first let me know if nobody can hear me because I do have a soft voice, so I will try to speak as loud as I can. My name is Beth Gorman, I'm in House Counsel for National Grid. And with me today, I have Dick Jones, the project manager for the Woburn Wakefield project for National Grid in Wakefield. And he'll be presenting, I'll be doing the introduction and he'll be presenting some of the details of the presentation. And to my left, I have Danielle Retsch, who is our stakeholder manager in internal, within National Grid, who's been working with our outside stakeholder management team as far as getting the information out to the public and for the past three years or so.
Okay. Yeah, just to, I'm not sure if you were here earlier when I mentioned that we want to make sure that you have your full time so you can present this before anyone asks any questions or has any concerns and then even the Board will wait. So we'll let you finish and then we'll ask questions of the Board, then of the public.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And I appreciate everybody coming out as well because it is, we understand it's an important project both for the region, the community, and people have questions about the impacts of this project as well. So we do appreciate that people are here to ask questions and we're happy to answer as many as, all of them.
Great. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, so next slide. As we said, do we have the...
Do we have the clicker?
Oh, that is, okay. Thank you, okay. So as you mentioned, we're here to do two, three things today. First, we were here several years ago, we want to update the town and the Board's Selectmen on where we stand on the project. We do want to seek agreement, we've been working with the DPW, Rick Stinson, the director and others in the engineering department to come out with an agreement of conditions so that this project will move smoothly through Wakefield. Been working with them for about a year and a half. So we've come to agreement on a lot of terms that we think are favorable to Wakefield which will allow this project to move smoothly and mitigate the impacts. And we also are here for statutory reason, which is to seek approval for franchise petitions or grant of location, which is a requirement under statute, Massachusetts General Laws one sixty-six, section twenty-two, that in order to be able to construct within a public way, we need to obtain approval of the Board of Selectmen. So we're also here for that and we filed that petition with the town about ten days And just as, just to understand that this is a project that's part of a greater group of projects. About ten years ago, ISO New England, and I'll explain who ISO New England is for those who aren't familiar with. ISO New England is the operator of the transmission system in all of New England and they have two major functions. One is to make sure that there are adequate resources to serve the entire New England region. So they are constantly annually making sure they have an auction to make sure that they're actually procuring all the right resources and that's getting more and more complicated with a lot of the renewables that are coming online. But that's one of their main functions, which is they want to make sure they have resources to make sure that they can keep the lights on for the entire New England region. This area, which is part of the greater Boston area, actually has been resource constrained and this suite of projects actually helps with that. The other thing that ISO New England is responsible for is making sure the transmission grid, which are usually the tall power lines that you see, not the small distribution lines or underground distribution lines that might be in your street, but the taller power lines and also their underground distribution lines as you get closer to Boston because there isn't room to go above ground. They also want to make sure that that system is reliable so that if, say, one transmission line is out or two are out or some generators are out, that that transmission can, system can still operate and that they're, basically that they're able to operate it with a number of what we call contingency situations so that there aren't any major electric blackouts. And that's, that goes to not just what the type of outage that you may see after a storm, but it's really to prevent a real serious blackout from happening as happened in Ohio that took out an entire northeast area in the early two thousand. So since then, ISO has been very vigilant about making sure that the backbone, the transmission system, that we have enough redundancies to make sure that those kinds of situations don't occur again. And that, this is one of the reasons that this project is also being built. So the study was studied, was started in about two thousand and seven and after about a year, it was recognized that there was definitely a need in this area to build a number of solutions. And ISO New England went ahead and started reviewing it along with EverSource and National Grid on what the kind, what are the best solutions that would improve and maintain reliability at basically at the lowest cost to the customers. And this project itself, like I said, is one suite of projects. This involves a new three hundred forty-five KV line that goes, starts at our Wakefield substation here on Montrose Street and goes, then goes up through Stoneham, Woburn, and into Winchester at EverSource's substation there. The petition before us today solely to seek approval for where we're occupying within the public way. So the petition that we've presented indicates where we actually need rights under the statute and the length of, the approximate length of those rights. And there are attached plans that actually show the route and the approximate location of the center line. So this project goes through Albion Street, starts off in Albion Street, up by the Stoneham Line, then turns into Broadway for a little over thirty-four hundred feet, crosses across North Ave and a little bit across Main Street, then towards Bennett Street. What happens actually is at that point, we are going on to the railroad right-of-way, the abandoned railroad right-of-way. So that's where you see that we don't have a lot, we have about a mile where we're just crossing some streets. So we're crossing Bennett Street, Richardson Street, and Water Street. And then once we're at the end of the railroad right-of-way, we turn right onto Salem Street, remain on Salem Street and for almost six thousand feet until we take a right onto Montrose for about thirteen hundred seventy-five feet into our substation. I will now turn it over to Dick Jones, our project manager.
Good evening and thank you for your time. Let's talk a little bit about the project itself and the tax revenues that the town or the benefits of town will see. As Beth indicated, the portion of this underground transmission duct within Wakefield is about three point four miles. It's important to realize or understand that one mile of that or, you know, about a third or a little under, a little over a third is on that inactive MBTA railroad bed. So there's no real major impacts there in terms of other utilities or interferences in the rail bed. I'll talk in a minute about the opportunities, or other opportunities with that rail bed in terms of recreation area. In addition to the actual underground duct that connects with the EverSource-Woburn substation, we'll be doing some updates in the Wakefield Junction Substation, some additional equipment installs, controls, updates, that sort of thing, all within the fence line. We are not going to expand or in any way increase the footprint of the existing substation. Now to the more interesting thing perhaps for the town, the tax revenues. We have an estimate of about one point six million dollar tax revenue for Wakefield in the first year after it's placed in service. The in-service date is June of two thousand nineteen. And after that, we've got an estimate of about seven point three million in terms of cumulative tax revenue over the first five years after it's in service.
I just wanted to add, we've just estimated for the first five years, through depreciation is going to start to drop from that one point five million, but until we depreciate fully, I think it's either twenty or thirty, maybe thirty years, there'll be tax revenue coming in into Wakefield.
Very good, thank you. Okay, in terms of a project update, the Energy Facilities Siting Board, a state agency, has the application. It was filed in September two thousand and fifteen. Decision is anticipated in December of two thousand and seventeen and this is not only for Wakefield, it's for the entire length of the line between the Woburn Substation and the Wakefield Junction Substation. We also have been in discussions and permit applications with the MBTA involving the abandoned railroad area and then the, oh, an active rail crossing and Mass DOT. And we've had multiple meetings with the town of Wakefield officials. I'd like to thank both the Department of Public Works, Rick Stinson, the Gas and Light Department, Dave Paulson. We've also met with the Town Conservation Commission and we have their tentative agreement on a notice of intent pending review of the stormwater submittal. Latest project drawing set was provided to both departments on October eleventh. We had a good meeting this morning reviewing the drawings in detail, checking utility interferences and other technical engineering issues. With that said, the plan going forward is periodic updates to the Selectmen and other town authorities, field visits and regular meetings with both Department of Public Works, the Gas and Light Department, Conservation Commission reviewing the design and sharing discussions, that sort of thing. We've also been involved or had reviews with the Town Tree Warden to discuss trimming and potential removals where perhaps a manhole has to be installed. And then of course, there will be meetings with the Police and Fire Department on traffic control plans or TMPs, traffic management plans. With that said, the schedule discussed on this slide, the objective would be to start in March of two thousand and eighteen on the unused MBTA right-of-way. We basically, I don't know if you folks are aware of it or you've hiked it or gone down it, but it's pretty well overgrown, rails old and rusted. I don't think it's seen any service and Rick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but twenty, twenty-five years, something like that? Yep. But the idea would be start the underground construction on that unused right-of-way. Once the duct bank is in, the manholes are in, the idea is to, and that will occur between April and November two thousand and eighteen, then once all that raceway is complete, the cable pulling and terminations will be January through April two thousand and nineteen with a in-service date of June of two thousand and nineteen. Once the cable's in, we have to test it and do some other technical adjustments to it and what have you. Next slide. These are the, an overhead view of the substation. That's the slide or the picture on the left is the Wakefield Substation. That's Montrose Ave, don't have a laser pointer, but Montrose Ave goes up and then that kind of open area, there you go, that area there is the driveway going up to the substation. Now, in the bottom corner, the plan is to build a larger sound wall and it's kind of the, to the left there, down, right there, that area is where we'll build a larger sound wall to basically improve the noise reduction in terms of the substation. That's a artistic rendition on the side are the second photo there. And that's basically what the substation would look like. And again, there's a transformer and controls things that will occur inside the switchyard. But that's the main view of the switchyard, if you will, from the outside, that new sound wall. With that said, I'll turn it over to Danielle.
Yes, I do. So, good evening, I hope you can all hear me. My name is Danielle Retsch and my role with this project is I lead the stakeholder communications, which encompasses all of our public outreach for the project. So I coordinate quite closely with the project team as well as construction and our focus is to help support throughout the permitting process as well as throughout construction and then close out of the project. So you can see up here, I don't really want to read line by line, but these have been all of our community meetings and events that we have held here in or about the Wakefield area. There were various open houses, one in each town that was held. We are also planning a, an open house that will focus on the construction activities because we do recognize that it's been a while since we've gotten to meet with the public face-to-face during an open house event, which is really done in a trade show style. So we have our subject matter experts, we have visuals, but we're there to basically interact one-on-one with you. It's not a formal presentation. We've had several meetings with the Wakefield town officials. town officials as well, to discuss our strategies, and whether we're updating the project website and therefore ask the community to post that updated link onto the town's homepage so that people can easily click onto it, or if it's letting them know that we have something going on. So, we'll drop off flyers so that they can be at Town Hall as well. We've done those. We've engaged in two complete rounds of door-to-door outreach, in where the team that works for me goes, we canvas a route, and it's the actual route of the line, plus two blocks in either direction, and we go door-to-door, and we either leave information on a door hanger, or we've actually engaged with conversations with the homeowners. So, our most recent outreach has been to abutters regarding test pitting that was done. That was not outreach to the entire community. That was just done to the people who would be around those test pit sites, because they're going to see the equipment, hear it, and whatnot. We've continued to do that throughout the process of soil borings. And, like I said, we, we're, right now, we're working on, once we have that EFSB... Order. Order, to, to organize an open house for construction. Our project does have a website, a hotline, and an email address that we are asking people to please contact with us if they have questions. We're very responsive to that. So, our future plans, like I said, forty-five days in advance of construction, we're going to be having that open house. We are going to continue to reach out to the businesses and residents throughout direct mailing, which sometimes confuses people. They see something from National Grid, and because we're not your utility provider, you throw it out, you toss it. And that's why we've been putting things like project information on the envelope, so that hopefully you're not throwing those pieces of paper out, you're actually opening up the mail and reading it. And we've also, you've got your, your website, hotline, email. The website is updated regularly, and as I stated before, we're pretty quick to return any messages that are left on our voicemail, usually within less than twenty-four
So, basically, these are the project benefits to the town. We kind of politicized them. Additional property tax income, the new sound wall that I talked about at the Wakefield substation provide further mitigation of noise levels in the immediate vicinity of the substation. Where the duct bank goes in and the manhole goes in, there'll be curb-to-curve paving for the impacted streets. One you may not know about is we're replacing about forty-two-hundred feet of existing steel gas line on Salem Street, and that's on our nickel as part of the project. That's part of the, the town's gas system. We'll also be paving the MBTA right-of-way in order to allow maintenance vehicles to access the various manholes. But the advantage to that is it will help facilitate the town's future use of the recreational trail, rails-to-trail sort of thing. That'll be on that abandoned railway, or unused railway, I should say. And as Bess alluded to earlier, we also got the advantage of the objective here of improving the regional electric reliability. So, those are the primary benefits. With that, I think, questions?
And we do have a number of subject matter experts here as well. I can introduce them now, but we do have our underground engineers, Dave Campelli, and Ead Alcso Brian, I'm sorry. We have Peter Valberg, who's also, I know there are people who are probably going to have questions about the magnetic field, so he is the one who actually did a report for us, because we, this is something that we do for every transmission line that we construct. So, Peter Valberg is here. We have Darren Swim, who works with Danielle, along with a number of other people as well. And Dave Clinch, who's our environmental expert. And I may have left a few people out, because I can't see them. But we did bring a lot of subject matter experts, so hopefully we can give as complete answers as we can.
Right. Yeah, thank you very much. That was, that was good. It might be helpful, too, if maybe there's more seats up here, if they'd like to come up, just so it would expedite, expedite the process in answering questions.
And I'm happy to stand.
Yeah.
You ready, what's that?
Come on, Darren. It's the train team.
Any questions from the board discussion?
Yeah.
Right?
Well, you answered one of my first questions, which was the curb-to-curb paving. So, Steve, are you satisfied that the, we talked about making sure that when we dig into the streets, we do it on a schedule, and we don't have those awful kind of scars in our roads after we pave them. So, are you comfortable that this is consistent with that?
DPW and Director and I have spoken, worked at length on that, and I think we're both comfortable with that curb-to-curb, so it won't be just a trench in the middle that's covered. It's actually curb-to-curb on those streets.
And then, I assume we're gonna, if anybody else is interested in getting into those streets, you know, in the next year, we'll be, maybe accelerate their access before these guys repave them?
That's why we've had, you know, light, MLD, and water, and everybody there.
Everybody's in, okay, good. Quick question on the, the sound wall at the substation? Just wondering, is that because, I don't, I didn't see any part of this that suggested the, that these changes would increase the sound coming from, from that station. So, I'm guessing that this is kind of to remediate some existing sound issues, or?
The cable doesn't, you're correct, but we're also installing another transformer, and that adds to the noise wall. It's part of the project.
Okay. Is there, what's the, what's the delta? You know, if it's, if it's currently at a hundred, is the next transformer, make it one-fifty, measured in whatever you want to measure, decibels, or is it a fifty percent increase, a ten percent increase? What's the?
My, I guess, I don't want to speak out of turn. For my, I believe, and Dan McIntyre, we could provide your response. For some reason, I thought with this new sound wall meaning to actually be lowering it by one DBA, but I don't want to say that, because I'm not the noise expert.
And so, you think that the net effect of the increased sound in the sound wall actually take the sound down?
The sound increases inside the substation, but the sound wall itself reduces the impacts outside the perimeter fence.
Right. And I believe that it's actually dropping it. So, it's reducing it instead of increasing it with the sound wall.
And to put up that wall, do you have to go back, go back to the zoning board?
So, we've alluded to the Energy Facility Siting Board. This project required an Energy Facility Siting Board approval, and then whenever we're before-
Sorry, I didn't understand. Did this project require what?
Energy Facility Siting Board approval as a transmission line. It's a board that basically looks at, is this something that's needed? What's the reason that it's needed for, is it something, an energy resource that's needed for reliability reasons? And then, it also evaluates the impacts. And also, zoning can also gets wrapped into that. So, as a result, the zoning is being done through the Energy Facility Siting Board. We met with the building inspector, went through what zoning was being triggered, and discussed some things with him a few years ago, and also obtained a letter saying that he agreed that this can be brought before the board, as is-
Which board?
The Energy Facility Siting Board, not, not yourselves. The EFSB, I'll call it. So, the zoning is getting wrapped in with that.
When this was originally built, though, wasn't, I thought this was, unless I'm crazy, permitted through the zoning board of the fields?
It was. It was permitted through the zoning board.
And so, now that this new activity is, you've kind of taken jurisdiction away from the zoning board and brought it to some superseding board?
Well, we can't do that without the consent. So, we did receive consent to go ahead, and what the, what happens is-
Sorry, consent from whom?
From the building inspector.
The building inspector said?
It's all within the building, and just a wall around it, so.
Well, so, one of my concerns, and where I really trust our zoning board, is in the look of that wall, right? You can build a wall, and you can build a wall. So, I, if you said, we're, you know, this is going to have to go to the zoning board, and they're going to probably put you through the wringer, and properly so, of sightlines from those different neighborhoods, from the end of Mackenzie Lane, from the end of each of those streets, to make sure that what's already kind of a big structure out there, and, and we knew we were getting into, so, you know, no complaints here, but that this wall doesn't somehow make the mass of it larger, make it more apparent when the leaves are off the trees, you know, any of those issues. Our zoning board is really good at, at addressing that, and making sure that, you know, we're not creating a bigger eyesore here in the process. I appreciate the effort to mitigate the sound, but it kind of bums me out, quite frankly, that, that our zoning board won't have a review of that. I'm very curious what that's going to look like, and again, from the different sightlines, from, from looking on Water Street, where you can see all the way up the, the power lines to the substation, and from the other side, where you can look all the way down, and then, like I said, through our various kind of neighborhood backyards, what the impact is. Because it looks good now, it sounds like it's a great thing, we're going to mitigate the sound, but in the process create a newer, you know, worse problem potentially. So, how do we get comfort that, that, or say, is really what I'd like in what that-
Well, one thing we can do, even though the, before the EFSB is to approve this with the zoning and the sound wall, is, is what, one thing we can do is do a presentation to the zoning board with what you just suggested. That is something we can do. It wouldn't necessarily give them the, and if there's input from them, and there's something that we can change, we could change it. Now, obviously, we have to mitigate the noise, and that's something that is important, and something that the EFSB is very, very cautious about, is that we, we are mitigating the noise. And this was the best, we, we originally had it inside the substation, but because of the configuration of one of the equipment, we, we ended up having to wrap it around part of the, the outside fence. But we can do a presentation to them and receive their input.
It was also something that was very important to the abutters. When we held the first open house for the project, the abutters to the substations, to the substation, really, their number-one concern was for us to mitigate sound. And when we started talking to them, and we started bringing their feedback back to our engineers, that's what led us to also, you know, really look at, how could we really mitigate the noise, not only to meet with the EFSB, but also to, to mitigate those concerns from the abutters.
Sure. And I, I agree, what you're doing is, is good. That's right. You should do it. I'm glad you are. But I just get nervous about, one of my, one of the reasons I even got involved in town government sixteen years ago or something, is, is how do they let them do that? That question that comes out of your mouth when you see something awful in your town, whether it's downtown, or out in the woods like this, or wherever it is, like, how did that happen? Who let them do that? And I always said, well, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to count on the pronoun people, "they." I'm going to be "they," and so that's why I've been involved. And so, this looks like one of those pronoun people things, like, when it's done, somebody will drive by, or one of those neighbors is going to look out their window and say, how did they let them build that awful, you know, with all due respect, right? It just has its potential. It is just a substation. It's not Cinderella's castle here. So, but, you know, I just worry about that. So, when I see this big structure, I see it imposing up over the trees there, I just get concerned. And I almost want something more than you'll get input from the ZBA. I, I always prefer the authority and the decision right, if I can get it. And so, if, if my board members would so agree, I, I don't know what exactly action you need from us, but I'd almost want to condition it on some sort of review or final kind of approval on this, although I would realize by asking that, I'm probably overstepping and treading on the jurisdiction of the board that supersedes us in the ZBA. I got it, but it's, you know, how do we, how do we resolve that?
I can answer the jurisdictional. Right now, jurisdiction that you have is over the public way. So, that not being in the public way, you probably jurisdictionally couldn't require us to actually seek approval of the ZBA. We have sought zoning exemptions. That doesn't prevent us from actually going and seeking approval, but with the exemption there, if, I think it, it would have the same result, which is, if we receive a zoning exemption, it could override the approval. We could always file for the approval, but it's, what I'm proposing is the same thing, which is, we can go and seek input onto it.
Sure. But we, we could potentially condition our public right-of-way approval on our comfort that the whole project is being built properly and to our liking. I think you, you're presenting all of this as part of a, hey, we're doing this sound remediation as a way to say, please approve our public way access rights.
This was actually more just a project update. I'm sorry to interrupt. This is just more to let you know that this is something, a project that we're updating. But the statute goes to incommoting the public way. So, if this incommodes the public way, you would have the ability to not approve our petition. But if it's not incommoting the public way, that's what's before you, which is, and it's really for the cable, not for this. I don't want to be disrespectful, but that's really what your jurisdiction is.
No, I know what it is, but I, I'm, I'm not comfortable approving the, the voting in favor of giving you the public way access rights, unless I'm comfortable that everything about the project is being done well. And I would suggest that you guys have sold the project to us with this list of benefits that we're getting, and I kind of, well, that kind of, you've looped it into the, the consideration here for me, and, and I'm having trouble letting it go. I just, I just, it's probably not a big deal, by the way, but again, I, I don't want to find out it's a big deal after it's built. We have an opportunity right now to say, let's just make sure it's, it's done right, and that everybody that lives in those neighborhoods understands exactly, they're probably just here, oh, you're going to mitigate the sound. That's great. Well, be careful what you wish for. That, that's all. So, maybe we'll just take it offline, but I'd like to see some, you know, I think you've offered to go back to the, to, to the ZBA, and maybe seek their input. They're, they're good folks, and they're good at this. And they have architects on the board, who are, at least one anyway, who's, you know, particularly good at coming up with creative solutions to mitigate sightlines, even if the wall's broken up versus a big wall. There's just different things you can do that, that will soften the appearance of it, if, even if it has to be large or something like that. So, I'll, I'll just, can you follow up on that, Steve, maybe, just to make sure? That's, that's probably a key thing. Let me see what else they had. And then, real quick, two other things. Rail trail, that sounds great. Thank you. So, you're going to pay, you're, you're going to do your underground access? Are you going to take the, the actual rails out, if they're not already? Great. You take all that out, you're going to pave it so that you get up a truck drive down there? Assume you're going to trim the, the brush and overgrowth and everything, and then you're going to put in manhole access, right?
Manholes, and then the duct system.
Right, and all underground, and then pave over everything with your manholes, so you can still access your manholes. That sounds great. Is it, have you tied off with the rail-to-trail committee, or anybody like that, or?
Well, we're basically working directly with the town.
Okay. You satisfied?
The engineers are aware.
Yeah, the things, this is another one of those. I don't want to find out afterwards that rail-to-trail, we would have got a million dollars from the federal government, but we paved it six inches too wide, you know, or something, right, something crazy. So, just, let's just, just make sure we're covered there as well. And then, the last thing is, you're doing this same activity in, in a few towns in order to get from Woburn to here. Have you been to their boards already?
Well, no.
Or you're not?
I remember that, and it's a jurisdiction issue. National Grid is strictly within Wakefield.
Okay.
The other three towns are all EverSource, different utility.
Oh, really?
We didn't include that. We, we just, probably didn't explain that. So, our portion of the cable is in Wakefield. Stonemam, Woburn, Winchester are EverSource's customers. So, they will be owning and getting all the approvals, the local approvals.
And how are they doing in their approvals? Are they coming along? Are they done, or? I'm sure, do you guys talk to them, I assume?
I don't think they're done.
You're just building separate bridges?
Right. I don't know. We're getting some updates, but I don't believe they're done with all of their, all of their local approvals.
But you, this is what you guys do for a living, right? You, a big part of your job is this type of activity?
Right.
Help me, so I don't find out, again, after the fact or from somebody else, what do other towns ask for, or require, or seek as part of this process, we might not be thinking of, since, you know, we have day jobs, too, and we don't do this every day? Is there something that we're missing, like, well, jeez, they usually ask for X, Y, and Z. I can't believe you guys haven't stumbled upon that yet. What were you going to get out in the parking lot and high-five each other about that we missed?
Nothing. Well, we've been working on, on the agreement, and I think we've been, we worked through, I think they're all the terms. I don't, I, and looking at what you've asked, I mean, it's an interesting question, but, I mean, curb-to-curve paving is usually big, because- big because we don't always curb-to-curb repave.
Right.
And just nothing is hitting me, and you're probably not going to believe me, but nothing right now is striking me that...
I believe it. I do. And one of the reasons I believe you is because this isn't first impression. You've come through a long process with the town, I've been aware of it, you've met with lots of folks in the town who are far smarter and more up to date on these kind of things than I am. And I know Rick Stinson and Steve have done their diligence, and I have a lot of confidence in them, but I was just seeing if it just happened to be something we were missing or anything like that, so.
I really can't, I can't think of anything.
I'm good for a moment, thanks.
Don't forget the yes line, we're pleased with the agreement.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's great, that's great. As long as you, as long as you go to the ZBA and they make sure they like what it looks like.
I actually have a series of questions for you, and I think, from the outset, one of the concerns that I have is about process. I recognize you put up this calendar of points of contact you've had with this town, but I noticed that the last substantive public participation would have been an open house you had back in April of 2015, almost two and a half years ago now. And I think that a lot of people here tonight recognize the fact that we're talking about a fairly aggressive schedule of implementation over the next several months, or the next year and a half, and I think most of the folks here don't feel like they've been heard, or certainly have not been heard recently on this. So, I have a real concern about process, but I'll go into my questions because I know the folks of this town have done their due diligence as best they can, and I'm sure they'll have plenty of questions for you as well. I guess to Selectman Falvey's point, when he had asked what other things could be offered, and you said you couldn't think of any, I know he took it at face value, I don't. I know, for example, in Stonem, there is the opportunity, and they in fact have an attorney that's being paid for, to represent them in working through the agreement. They also have a consultant, an independent consultant, that is also being paid for through, I believe, Eversource, in order to have an independent perspective on this. And one thing that hasn't yet come out, and one thing I did not see noted here, but I know is a concern for the people of this town, are the health considerations associated with this. And I recognize that you have an expert, that National Grid has a vested interest in hiring someone who can, with authority, say that there are no health concerns here. The most that an expert can say is that the health is inconclusive. There's not an expert in this country that can say that there is no potential risk. The question is, to what extent does the risk exist? And I have no doubt that Dr. Valberg will be able to present that he is quite confident that there are no health risks presented or no health risks to the community. I tend to disagree with that. I have great concern when we're talking about the caliber of expert that National Grid has hired. Dr. Valberg, he's from Gradient, very, very well-known, but they also represent, for example, two of the largest and most powerful lobbying groups in Washington. So, that's one of the clients. And they represent the American Petroleum Institute and the American Chemistry Council, as an example. That concerns me. We are a small town, we are not DC, we don't have lobbyists. But I want to make sure that what we're doing is correct. So, you can bring an expert here, and the expert can try to allay fears, but I think that I have great concern about the legitimacy of the downplaying of potential health risks here. And I have considerable concern when the person that is testifying to this on behalf of National Grid is the same person that is part of a group that, a study of approximately 150 articles or letters written by Gradient Group, 98% of the time, they found that, you know, there weren't not toxins or not chemicals involved with whatever it was they were studying. So, Gradient is known nationwide as, when there's an issue, you know, there are challenges, for example, to, challenges to such straightforward science as asbestos and the dangers of asbestos. Gradient has been known to go the opposite way on that and say, well, maybe not. Arsenic, another example, Gradient has been said, well, you know, look at this. Gradient was involved with the big tobacco and trying to advance an alternate theory in terms of a lot of the concerns associated with that litigation. So, I find it disheartening that National Grid would hire an expert with, associated with that kind of group, and I understand he came from Harvard, I understand that Gradient prides itself in the fact there are a lot of Harvard affiliations. That doesn't mean, though, that when you hire an expert and you're looking for a certain conclusion, nine times out of 10, or in this case, 98 out of 100 times, that expert is finding in your favor. That troubles me. So, I think a part of this process, and I, this is a board of selectmen meeting, and please, maintain decorum, because that's not what this is about, this is about a meeting. As far as where we stand with this, I'm newer to this board, and I recognize, though, that at this point, I don't think I'm satisfied with the process. I don't think that we've had the opportunity to have someone on par who can come and speak and offer the other side, offer the other concerns and the other science that's supported by, you know, by the scientific community. I understand these folks here have done the best they can, you know, online and the rest, but they're not in a position to be able to speak to these issues in the same way that someone that we can have retained to represent our concerns. And ultimately, if there are not concerns, then that's a different discussion. But at this point, there's a lot of uncertainty, and I feel incredibly uncomfortable about the idea of going forward with this project on this accelerated basis without us having the opportunity to have our own consultant. So, I'll ask you, is National Grid willing to pay for this town to have an independent consultant that we select to do an assessment of this project and any potential health considerations?
I first want to address the process that you raised, that there hasn't been enough process. We had our open house, was it April of 2015?
April 30th, 2015.
And in September of 2015, we filed with the EFSB. Part of the EFSB's process is to have a public hearing, where every abutter within 300 feet of the transmission line receives notice. That public hearing was held in Stonem. Everybody who's in the abutter, not just directly, but 300 feet back from the streets, would have received notice. At that point, they would have had a lot of input into this project. There were EMF concerns raised by Stonem residents and by Winchester residents. We didn't hear any EMF concerns raised by any Wakefield residents who appeared. There actually weren't that many who appeared at that particular hearing, but that was not for lack of providing notice to people. There has been a, probably a year and a half process after that where there were parties who intervened, from Stonem, from Winchester, and there was a Wakefield intervenor, I believe he lives on Salem Street, and he had wanted us to go down New Salem Street and not go entirely up the right-of-way, that was his concern with the project. And that's still under consideration by the EFSB. They potentially could say, let's go down New Salem Street, we don't believe they will, but they could. That was the concern that was raised by that intervenor. So, there was a lot of process, and part of the EFSB process is reviewing the analysis that Mr. Valberg has input into every port. And they carefully review what the EMF levels are, they see a lot of these projects, they understand what's high, what's low, and Mr. Valberg can definitely talk to that as well, what the levels are currently, that they, and what we're expecting. That EMF data, and that was heavily challenged during the EFSB process. In fact, Stonem and Winchester were asking that we install a different cable, which we can't because it doesn't meet the proper long-term emergency rating, which is basically during a long-term emergency, it would heat up too much, so we needed a certain kind of cable, we can't. So, that was heavily litigated during the EFSB. We haven't received a decision, we're expecting one in December, but all that, this, the abutters had that ability to be part of that process. So, if, for some reason, they didn't attend the public hearing, we did our best to notify everybody, there were three weeks in a row, also there were newspaper publication before the public hearing, that was in November of 2015. Also, we did the door-to-door.
We also did publications, we did two rounds of complete door-to-doors, where we knocked on every door, not only along the route, but also two blocks within either direction of the route. We also, prior to the open house that we had, we also did do ads in the newspaper, so that it wasn't just an invitation that was received in the mail, which was done in a postcard style, oversized, instead of an envelope, so that you would see it immediately and kind of, your eye would catch it. The door-to-door, we've had reports on it, it's always gone well. As we've spoken to members along the route, they've said they either don't have questions, or if they do have questions, we've been able to answer them on the spot. Everyone has always been, any one of our contractors that have been doing work as we've progressed through, whether it was test pitting or field surveys, have always had all of the project information there with them. So, if they are approached from any member of the public saying, hey, what are you guys doing out here, they've got that website hotline and email right then and there, and have been able to give that out to the public as well. Unfortunately, I can't make sure that everybody opens up a piece of mail or that the mail office, you know, the post office delivers every piece and nothing gets lost. What I can do is direct people to say, you know, the website is your best point of interest, you can definitely call us, we get back to you, you can email us, we get back to you. And if we can't, if we don't have the answer right away, we email you back, or we call you back and we say, we're working on it. We've got our subject matter experts on call, and, you know, we're working on the answer, we're looking to see how best we can explain this to you so that you're satisfied.
But if people were so satisfied with this process you're claiming has been underway since 2015, why do you think we have a theater full of people tonight expressing concern?
I don't know.
I think it's because, I think it's because they're not satisfied, and I think that speaks to the process. And I think we have an opportunity here to make sure that the people that are most impacted by this are able to make sure that they are satisfied that a process has been seen through. I'll go back to my question that I had asked, is National Grid willing to provide the funds so that this town can hire an independent expert to do the assessment of this plan relative to its health and safety concerns?
I want to answer a question with a question, because if an independent consultant is hired, I guess I'm having difficulty understanding how that would fit into the process, because that has been reviewed by the EFSB, and we are now waiting for a decision after more than two years, to see, the routing was contested by Winchester and Stonem, and the cable. So, we're waiting to see what they approved, did they approve our project as is, is there any minor, are there any minor modifications? But really, the arena for looking at EMF was the EFSB. Even if we were to hire another consultant, the EFSB has reviewed this at this point.
But the EFSB is still determining the route, at least through Stonem, and at this point, you don't even know where this is going, how this is going to be routing through Stonem, is that correct? That's the decision you're still waiting on that you don't have yet, correct?
The EFSB is drafting the decision.
Right, but you don't, you don't know what it's going to, what it's going to look like as of tonight, is that correct?
We can't say for sure.
Right.
Because it was disputed.
So, until we have that, it would be premature, because if, for example, if it wound up, say, Route 28 through Stonem, that would change the route to coming through Wakefield. The current route that you have would not be the route that would be followed if, in fact, EFSB determines that an alternate route is allowable or preferred, correct?
Correct. But honestly, the way to, for the EFSB to actually choose that route is to find that what we presented is, that their route that Stonem presented was clearly superior. There was no, throughout the entire 13 days of evidentiary hearings in Boston, there was nothing that Stonem presented that showed that that route was clearly superior to Wakefield. And that route would actually, I think, is less beneficial to Wakefield. So, we're hoping that's not approved.
At some point, if there is a route that is approved by EFSB, an alternate route or just the route as it's currently planned, though, that route is going to connect through Wakefield, and we're going to have a route in Wakefield. And I should point out that the route in Wakefield is almost three and a half miles, which is considerably longer than what we have going through Winchester or Stonem, correct? Each of those is only about a mile and change, correct?
That's right.
So, we have almost three times what other of those other communities have of the 345, correct?
That is correct.
And that's different than the 115, because the 115, which is obviously a third of the voltage, that's the other route that's going through Charlestown and Medford and all the rest, and parts of Winchester. But we have, we have the higher voltage, three times that with the 345, right?
That's correct, right.
So, when we're talking about this, and when we're looking at this, then we're talking about an expanse of a line that is almost triple what our neighboring communities have, at a voltage that is the highest voltage that's being used anywhere across the region. And I'm asking, in light of that, is National Grid willing to pay for an independent expert to be retained by the town to do an assessment of the plan and the potential health and safety concerns of this proposed project? Yes or no?
That's not for me to decide. I think we need to take that back, but I would like to understand what benefit that EMF report, if it confirms, we can provide what Winchester did, but if it confirms what Peter Valberg said, then I guess there's a benefit, if you're concerned that you just want to verify that what he says is accurate.
I want to be able to say that we, as a town, are able to retain an expert to make a determination, independent of any bigger business interests, as to the health and safety considerations that would go into any such project. And I think that that would be a very reasonable expectation of a community that's invested in its residents, and especially its youth. And I am surprised that there would be pause to allow that to even be the case.
Well, we've had, we've had a lot of transmission projects, we've never been asked to do that, so that's why we're pausing. If you don't want to hear from Mr. Valberg, it sounds like you have already made up your mind that whatever he says is actually not accurate.
I have absolute confidence that Mr. Valberg will be supportive of whatever it is that National Grid is looking for. So, with respect to that, I want to make sure that we have our own, our own expert, independent of any other interest aside from, you know, those of the health and safety of our town. I'm not looking for someone, I'm looking for a hired gun, I'm not looking for someone who's going to determine that this is, there's health risks. I want someone who can do an independent assessment and come back to the town so that we, as a board, can make a determination that is what's most appropriate for our town's people. And I don't think we have that right now, and all due respect, I don't think Mr. Valberg is going to offer that to us tonight.
And let me ask you, do you know what you're seeking as far as what the cost would be?
Respectfully, I mean, this is, I think this speaks to process. Tonight, we're talking about this for the first time, I think we need to make the determination. I don't know what we're talking about in terms of costs. I would imagine that we'd want someone of the caliber of Mr. Valberg, especially in terms of his background and experience, and given that National Grid is willing to support, you know, an expert of that caliber and experience, I would imagine that we'd have someone of similar caliber supported by National Grid. That's what I'd be looking for, I think, in the short term on this. But I think that's an important piece, and I think all the other discussion beyond this, and we can get into the details of the fact that you're talking about depreciating this, and you're talking about the payments, but over maybe a 30-year span, this is going to be in the ground for more, a lot more than 30 years. You know, this is a major project, I get it, you know, we're talking hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars involved, and like, I get that, there's a lot at stake here. You folks have a lot at stake, but all of us have a lot at stake. And I think it's premature for us to make determinations when clearly there's community concern, because I suspect most people here are concerned about the project, and I think we have to be able to do our due diligence. Clearly, you folks have been able to do it on your end, and I think we need to be afforded the same opportunity. I don't think we've done that, with all due respect to our town administrator and our DPW director, who I know do a very good job at what they do. I think we have to be evenly matched with this.
Right, so I don't disagree, with all due respect. And we'll take that back. The only part which I think I've made, which is, there was that opportunity over two years ago to start that process.
Well, that was then and this is now. And there's a new board, there's a new board in this town, and that's what this new board's looking for. And if you're looking for any sort of approval from this board, I think you should listen to this board.
I do want to make you aware that because this is the EFSB, that if for some reason this board does deny it, we do have the ability to get that, this approval from the EFSB as well. Not that that's going to make a difference in what we decide, but what, the reason I'm saying this process has been going on for two years is that there was the ability to hear this from Wakefield, and we hadn't heard it until today. So, I guess I can also be a little surprised that we're hearing it for the first time, because we would have been working with Wakefield on this for over two years, trying to work this through.
But we find ourselves in the position that we do now, and we can wonder why we are where we are, but it doesn't change the fact that we're here where we are now. And so, I think we need to be constructively moving forward to determine what's going to make sense, so that we can give this project the due consideration that it deserves, and ultimately make a decision that's going to be best for all involved. And I don't think we're there yet. Thank you. Thank you.
Let me, sorry, Tony.
I just, that's what happens in your bookend by two attorneys. Very quickly, all I heard was the cost associated with an independent consultant. What is, what's the health cost of the people in this room? What are the costs of the residents? What are the costs of children?
The only reason I ask is, the only, no, can I just answer?
Excuse, I'm talking. This is my floor. Thank you. And I'm not going to beat up on you further. You know, I think maybe we should look forward to just maybe taming this for 30 days and let you come back with an answer to, you know, Ed's question about the independent consultant.
Right, and the only reason I ask is so that if we're taking it back, we need to have a cost associated with it. That's all. Not that a cost will matter, but in order to get some internal approval, we would need to know what that means and the costs.
I can ask a question for you. How would you select an expert satisfactory to the town? I mean, do you have a criteria or what, what would you want us to do in terms of selecting someone?
Well, I think, I think as, as a board, I think we'd want to establish that criteria and make that determination as a board, and then we would seek out folks that, that fit that criteria and then make a determination. As far as costs, I, I think you probably have a better sense of range, you have an expert currently, so you probably have a better sense of range of costs than we do at this point. But I, I think we'd want to make sure that he or she is able to do a thoughtful, thorough analysis.
So what would it take to come up with your criteria in a couple weeks?
I, I would expect so, yeah. I, I would expect we'd probably at least have to have one meeting on that after this meeting to make that determination. And then from there, once we establish the criteria and, and select that person, then that person will have to do his or her work.
Okay, we'll, we'll take it back.
Tony, you also? I'm good. Thank you.
Jan, do you have anything?
One of my questions are now thrown off by the change. I did have a question, which was going to start my thought process. I appreciate what Ed was saying. I probably would say it a little bit differently, even though we both have the same degree. I think the health, I was on the board a few years ago. And the health concerns were brought up, but I appreciate you saying, we probably didn't push it, the questioning is far, because I think the project was a little bit further down the road. I appreciate the community out there saying, in reading their letters, I do feel like I need a little time to research this myself, because I'm also not going to take, you know, stopoversource.org as my, or whatever.com as my byline to, to believe what is being said, just like I don't believe the anti-vaccine sites that sound real. So, but that, that's, I'm not saying what's in there is wrong, I'm just saying I'm not going to take it at face value. I did have a question, though, about physically the, the cables underground, because when some of the criticism was coming up, people talked about high-tension wires. Well, of course, these aren't, aren't high-tension wires. But can you, can someone explain to me just the construction aspect of how they're buried and what they're buried in?
Sure. I'm Dave Campilli, Underground Transmission Engineering with National Grid. And, and basically what we're putting in is, is insulated and shielded power cables. The installation process begins with all the engineering that we've done to pick the route, identify where the utilities are, and find a place in the street where, where the line will fit, excuse me. We'll have a contractor dig a trench. They'll, they'll install plastic conduits, geez, I need some water, I think, some conduits in the ground. Those, those conduits are going to be encased in concrete every 1,500 feet or so, thank you. Every, every 1,500 feet or so along the route, there'll be a, what we call a, wow, excuse me, man, a manhole, which is where the cables will be pulled from and spliced. Those are basically an underground concrete vault, typically about 30 feet long and about eight feet wide. Once the conduit system is in place, the cables are then pulled from manhole to manhole, spliced in the manhole. And that's, when they get to the substation, the cables are terminated in the substation. So what, what you have is, they, they are high-voltage cables, but, but they're actually shielded on the outside, so there's no external electric field from the cables. They're, they're in concrete encased conduits, so they do have some substantial mechanical protection to them. And, and that's, that's the basic flow of the installation. Once, uh, once the trench is installed, we'll go through and, and repave the roads as part of, part of the final project cleanup.
So when you said that the power cables are shielded, and just because I know, I don't know a lot about the construction, construction aspect of this, what are they shielded with?
Um, there, there's a metallic layer on the outside of the cables. Now, that, that shields the actual electric field within the, within the cable. If you see the overhead transmission lines, those are, those are bare wires, and those are, those are actually insulated by being high up in the air.
Okay.
These cables are in the ground, so they have a plastic insulation over the conductors and a metallic shielding over the insulation.
And so when you just indicated that there's no external electronic field, I'm just trying to understand, so...
There's, there's, there's no electric field. There's two, there's two different fields that come off of power cables. One would be electric fields, the other would be magnetic fields.
Okay.
So, so there's, there's shielding for the electric fields.
Okay.
There, there are magnetic fields from, from the underground cables. There are also magnetic fields from the wiring in your house, from the distribution lines that go up and down your street that, that feed your house. And, and from that point of view, there, there's really no difference between this cable versus distribution lines that are already there, your house wiring, your appliances. Peter can talk more to the state of the health effect research and things like that, but this is, you know, this is really not any different because it's a higher voltage. It's, it's the electric current that actually makes the, the magnetic field. What we have done is, in designing this system, we've arranged the conduits in such a way to give us as much cancellation of the magnetic fields as possible. And, and we are, you know, we are burying them a certain depth, which helps reduce the magnetic fields. But it's, it's, you know, anytime electricity is used anywhere, it does generate magnetic fields. This is no different.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize for the croaky voice.
No, that's okay, thank you.
So are you, just, are you the expert to which Mr. Dombrowski was referring, or?
I'm sorry.
Is that somebody else? Okay, so, so maybe between the two of you. Just curious, I'll ask you a question, first of all. If I were to measure the electromagnetic field near your, your conduit under the street, either next to it or standing above the pavement, pavement, how much higher would it be if I measured it next to my electric stove on in my house or a typical outlet or light fixture or my TV? Would I get a substantially larger field or, or not?
Yes, good evening. I'm Peter Valberg. I did the electric and magnetic field analysis, and I guess I might want to say in response to the earlier comments that perhaps we're not giving the EFSB sufficient credit for the thoroughness with which they went over all of this material. You have to remember that in addition to the days of hearings where expert witnesses were cross-examined by the board and by other parties that were in attendance, those were preceded by many weeks of so-called information requests, where anything that was reported in something like the EMF report was looked at carefully by the Energy Facility Siting Board, and they, the experts were required to give answers if they thought that was somehow biased. And so all those materials, I think, are probably here in the library in Wakefield, and, and they're also on the docket for the EFSB for this project. So if you were, wanted to know more about the EMF, there's really a wealth of information available that could be reviewed, and if you think there's something wrong with it, I mean, certainly, I think anyone would welcome the opportunity to address that or correct it and so on. Okay, then back to the main question. I think that, that Dave said exactly what is true, is that wherever there is electric current, there are magnetic fields. I mean, that's just the law of, of physics. And we have been using, as a society, we've been using 60-cycle electricity for 100 years now, and all the lines, both in Massachusetts and around the country, that deliver electricity via this kind of current, you know, generate this kind of magnetic field. The currents, as you probably know, wash back and forth at 60 times a second, and so that means the magnetic field grows and decays at 60 times a second. And that's really the, the so-called EMF that people are talking about. The major source of EMF is really from motorized appliances, because the basic physical principle that causes motors to turn is a repulsion between the magnetic fields of the stationary part and the rotary part. So that in your home, if you have motorized appliances like washers, fans, hair dryers and so on, the magnetic fields of all of those have been measured, then they're quite high. I mean, they're in the hundreds of milligaus, whereas the fields from these lines, when you're above them on the street, is in order of tens of milligaus. And I often give you, give a comparison to the earth's magnetic field, the same magnetic field that turns a compass needle as you walk around, that's, that's a field of about 500 milligaus. Now, that is a steady field. That's not like the cyclic field that we have in the electricity system. But, you know, it helps you give some perspective on the size of these numbers. So, in any case, as a, a long answer to your question is that, yes, in your home, anything that has current in it, whether it's an electric stove or washer or refrigerator, will create fields in their vicinity. Now, those fields will fall off with distance, just like the fields from these underground lines, they fall off with distance quite rapidly, because the total current in the lines is really zero. There's three lines and currents are going in, in different directions in all three in such a way that it adds up to zero at any instant in time.
So, so the, if I were to just, you said milligaus, if I was to measure that, again, standing in the street versus standing near a lamp in my house, you're saying the field in my house is, or near that lamp is in the tens and, or, excuse me, in the hundreds? Or is that only the motorized appliances?
It's really only the motorized appliances that have the hundreds. I mean, it, on the lamp, it depends how much current it draws. I mean, if it's a low wattage lamp, then there's more current.
60-watt bulb, regular, yeah.
And if it's a high wattage lamp, there's more current. And now, nowadays, we use LEDs, which in fact draw very little current, and so there would be consequently very little magnetic field. But I think, as, as Dave mentioned, that you have lines coming into your house that bring the current via those drop lines, and there's a lot of current in those lines. We have like 200 amp service in most modern houses.
All right, so if I were to measure it there, next to my circuit breaker board or panel?
If you were, when you're underneath your service line, you're probably measuring, you know, five or six milligaus, because you're, you're quite a ways away from it, and, and you're carrying about 200 amps on those service lines. So that, that would be my estimate. And the bottom line is, in, I should probably mention this, in the course of this proceeding, the EFSB did in fact ask for measurements along the route of present-day magnetic fields, and those were done, and they're available in the report to the EFSB.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm asking for is just context, right? So you can tell me it's 100 milligaus. You know, that's, really means nothing to me. I need, I'm just looking for the context. Next to my lamp, next to my garbage disposal, which is spinning with an electric motor that I'm sure is magnets, and, and my blender, and I can think of a thousand things in my house. So, so what's, what is the, you know, as I walk around my home and my regular utilization of my house, my microwave, I don't know, all those things going on, what's the, what's the delta, right? And then I go outside and I stand, stand in my street and, you know, all the metal on my body dives to my feet because there's this cable underground, you know, sucking everything down. I don't think, I honestly don't think that that's the activity, because I actually have faith in a lot of the folks who are, who have done their diligence over the past years on this matter, and also in the industry in general where these things have been installed. So I'm just, you know, help me out. Help me help you is kind of where we're at right here. So what is the delta? What, what's, what's the difference? What's the context of if I measure it in my house and I measure it in the street? Is it 10x what's in my house? Is it 5x? Is it equal? Is it one-half? What is it?
Well, it, it depends how close you are to the appliances.
Sure.
Close to the appliances is definitely 10 times more than what you have above the street. When you're away from the appliances, it's probably 10 times less, because the fields do drop off with distance.
Okay.
From your appliances.
All right, so when I'm standing above it in the street versus when I'm standing next to my blender? I mean, the blender's going to throw off more electromagnetic field, a higher measurement than the, than the line in the street is?
Yes, the blender will. And there, in fact, the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences has a wonderful booklet called Questions and Answers About Electric and Magnetic Fields, which, again, you can get online. And they have a table of very typical appliances, and they tell you what the fields are, you know, close to, one foot away, two feet away, and so on. You'll see that they drop off quite rapidly, but that they are quite high. For example, a hair dryer, which has a motor in it, it has a very high field, and you hold it close to your head, but only for a short period of time.
Can I also? Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, yes. One of the things that we do offer, and we are, will be offering for this project as well, we do it for all of our transmission projects, is we do have someone that can come to your home and do an EMF reading pre and post-project. This is done with, at no cost. And what the homeowner will get is, there's two choices. You can either be home for it, where we'll do both outside and inside, or you don't have to be home and we only do the outside. And the technician comes to your house, and either myself or somebody that works with me usually goes as well. We will also then email you the report, and in that email, you get a, basically a Google shot of your property and, you know, from the sky, and it pinpoints where we took measurements. It tells you in the house where we took measurements, and you also get not only the measurements of your house, but you also get all of the information that Mr. Valgar just explained of, here's your typical measurements of EMF with different objects in your house, different, you know, the coffee maker or the, or the blender. And you can see for yourself, there's, there's easy comparisons to make right then and there. And people are, 99.9% of the time, people are actually let down when we go out and do these, because the readings are so much lower than what you've expected. I also, we also have updated EMF brochures that give you actual websites that aren't, they're vetted. It's the World Health Organization. You can look at Mayo Clinic, you can look at these places that are actually, have nothing to do with National Grid. They're independent, you know, companies that are vetted, such as the World Health Organization, that provide information on this. And you know that you're not just getting it from Wikipedia or random Google search, which is something that I think is really important for people to understand. You want the information that you have to be verified information, not just a, a random opinion or, or somebody who says, "I found something and now I'm going to write about Also, the EFSB, I'm sorry, I don't mean to keep interrupting, the EFSB documents are also on the website. You can, when you go to the Woburn to Wakefield page, there is a link there that you can click and just automatically get to the documents, so you don't have to search the EFSB website.
I, I think it's, the, the little history volunteered of the, the diligence that went on at that level with that board, I think, for this project and for other parts of this project is, is, is telling. It's the comfort I, I kind of referred to when I first spoke on this, that a lot of folks have been working on this for a few years, including our, our town administrator and our, and our head of DPW and different boards and organizations in our town and in, within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I, I do have some comfort that, that we haven't been let down by them, nor do I, quite frankly, believe we've been duped by your, your expert, who seems to be pretty genuine and, you know, kind of really interested in millijoules or whatever they are and milligaus. And so I just have some comfort in that. I, I do, I, I believe that a lot of times, the process, I think Jan said, you know, now that we're on the, we're on the verge of putting a shovel in the ground, people get concerned and think that perhaps they've missed something. And I have a greater faith, I guess, in, in, in the process and the history that's gone on, having been on our zoning board for 10 years, if you can't tell, a lot of faith in our zoning board and now is, you know... And now is, you know, and I'm hearing about the activities of this other board and the opportunities all along the way for public input, whether it be from, you know, abutters and people who are affected or industry folks who might be for or against a project and that board's diligence, it's just nice to know that that went on. And I think for everybody here, and I'm very interested in hearing from them too, so I'll be quiet in a minute, but I am, personally, I'm generally comforted knowing the diligence that goes on behind the scenes very often before things get in the light of day and the FUD tends to spread like wildfire. So I just have a greater degree of confidence. I do wanna hear from people and hear you address their concerns, but thank you for the background on that.
Mr. Mayo or Mr. Mullen, anything from either?
I just should mention that the town of Wakefield did intervene in the sighting process and I attended several hearings and we submitted two briefs. So we certainly had our say.
Okay, thank you for being so patient out there. Any questions? Remember, don't just raise your hands, just come to the front, either microphone, just be careful walking down, it's dangerous unfortunately, walking down it, even with the bright lights of Miami here. And yes, please state your name and address and who you're directing the questions to, whether it be the board, Mr. Mayo, Mr. Mullen, or anyone from National Grid.
My name is Chrissy, I live on 129 Vernon Street and I have been barely notified about this project, but I won't get into it.
Oh, excuse me, what's your last name?
Perlak.
Okay.
I did receive your two notices, but, and then I have contacted you guys and I believe you guys referred me to somebody in Boston and from there I haven't heard anything. If I knew about town meetings and all the other meetings, I definitely would have been there. I found out through Facebook over the weekend all about this. I honestly was under the impression that this wasn't really happening anymore and I was kind of happy about that. My concern is the railroad is right in my backyard and would you guys, any of you guys, have your daughter or your children play on top of a high voltage wire? That's my concern. I do not want my daughter or any of her friends playing there and I'm very upset that the railroad is my backyard. So would you guys, would you guys allow your children, your grandchildren to play on top of that wire? Would you? Answer it, you would? You would? Okay, it just doesn't sound, it just doesn't sound safe. It just, you know, and I will, I will do my best to not allow that to be in my backyard.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
What's that? Okay. Right, so just, yeah, just to clarify, so all questions should come through me, you know, just to me and then, and then just, we can redirect, it was probably my fault in the beginning.
Sorry.
And then we'll redirect. And so state your full name and address.
I'm Victoria Johnson, I live on 5 Houston Street. My question's about the tax revenue that's gonna be generated from this project. I saw on your presentation, the cumulative over five years is seven point three million with one point five eight million annually roughly over those five years. First question is, how did this dollar mill get determined?
Okay. Mr. Mayo?
I'll answer that. That is their estimate, but the value of the upgrades and what have you will be vetted through our assessor.
Okay. I have a few more questions about this, if that's okay. So I did the math out based on citidata.com, so obviously I know that that's not gonna be exact, but Wakefield has roughly twenty-six thousand residents, is that, is that correct? Okay, so the average size per household is two point five people, which leads us to around ten thousand four hundred tax paying households, roughly. So with one point five million dollars in revenue a year, that is approximately one hundred and forty-four dollars in revenue annually per household that is going to be a gain in this town. And I know I pay over four hundred dollars a month, so just saying, in comparison. And I wanna just know, after the five years are up, how is the amount of revenue going to be determined moving forward for the balance of the years?
Well, like, like every, every other business or every other facility like this in town, it's assessed by the assessor and then, and then it's taxed according to the tax rate set by the selectmen.
Thank you.
Okay, so, sorry about that.
My name is Leah Christie and my address is 997 Main Street, Unit 12. This is my first town meeting, so obviously that speaks to the fact that this is something that got me to come out tonight. I have two daughters, I have a four-year-old and I have an eight-year-old. I understand the word "abutters" to mean that you reached out to people who would be directly, you said specifically, within two blocks of the neighborhood, but yet if this goes into effect, it would go by the Galvin Middle School. And the Galvin Middle School is where both of my daughters will end up attending. So on the United States National Cancer Institute website, they say that children who live in an area or spend significant time near an area where there is high voltage lines and electromagnetic fields have a significant increase in the risk of childhood cancers, including leukemia. I would like to hear from our scientists, I guess, sorry, if I'm allowed to direct it, not Tim.
Makes sense.
Would you disagree with that? Are you saying that the United States National Cancer Institute is not correct in saying that kids who are in these areas have a higher risk of childhood cancers, including like leukemia?
Okay, so, who would like to answer that one? Okay.
Well, yes, I would like to respond to that. I looked at that National Cancer Institute website and, you know, it did discuss a whole variety of different electric and magnetic field results. What that website did say, however, is that you have to look at the evidence from all sorts of different lines of analysis. They talked about animal experiments that the National Toxicology Program had done, funded by the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences to look at whether there were any health effects. Those experiments turned out to be negative. That's on the, that's on the NCI site that you refer. They also looked at mechanism. They said that there was no mechanism by which these weak magnetic fields could cause biological effects. There were epidemiology studies back in nineteen seventy-eight and some of the following years that indicated there may have been an association with disease risk. But then the National Institutes of Health funded a lot of programs that said, "We've gotta try to figure out if this statistical association, is it going to be something that's really true or is it something that really is just a correlation that has no causal basis?" Those studies have been done and over the years, that epidemiology signal has actually gotten weaker rather than stronger as the studies have gotten bigger and better designed. So I think the thing to remember is that in terms of public health agencies like the National Cancer Institute or the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Control or the US EPA, none of these agencies put these electric and magnetic fields at a very high priority. Science can never prove a negative and so it's, yes, it's correct. You can't go out there and say, "Well, absolutely not, there's, you know, solid proof of zero possibility of any risk." However, from the accumulated evidence that we have seen up to now, and accumulated evidence that the Energy Facility Sighting Board has looked at over many years, it seems like this is very unlikely to be an actual risk. And I think that the NCI website in fact agrees with that.
Can I ask one follow-up then?
Sure.
So, I think you did actually speak to the fact that in Winchester and in Stonem, I'm under the impression that this has, this project has been met with opposition in those two towns. You went as far to say that it's not approved yet and you're working on approval in those towns. So if those two towns are in opposition to allowing that, why would we allow that? And what are we going to do for our own, you know, who are gonna be the experts on this project that are gonna do the research for the town of Wakefield? That they're gonna be independent, science, you know, because at what cost? We have Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department. We don't need National Grid or Eversource. It's not a benefit to the residents of Wakefield. So why would we take on this project if there's any risk involved when I don't really think there's a lot of benefit for us, you know, as far as, and then if, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna pave our rail trail, awesome, but underneath it is there like a ticking time bomb waiting on the health of the children? So, you know, what are the credentials gonna be? The biographies, the professional references that you're gonna provide to the public? What can the town of Wakefield do to have this, you know, investigated to the extent that we would like it investigated before we move forward? I feel like they're really trying to move this forward without doing it due diligence for our children.
Okay. Who's best equipped to answer that one? There's actually two parts to it, so, see, do you have any of that? I think you have a little.
I think that the board, if the board so desires to hire someone, the board will make that determination.
Okay.
Does that sound fair?
Just a quick sidebar question, with Winchester and Stonem, who paid for the attorneys or anyone who was representing the towns? Did you folks pay for that? They paid for it themselves or?
Can I just explain that-
Sure.
-the three other towns are Eversource towns. This town is National Grid. So there, there's a split, if I can clarify that. The other thing I just wanted to explain was that, yes, that you guys do have a municipal light and gas and that's your distribution, that's the power that comes to your home. Now, there's power that you still need to bring from a generation to the transmission system to bring it to Wakefield. That's your transmission system, that's like your I-95 or your 93 or 295, 495, those are your super highways. That's what brings all of the energy from the generator or the power stations into the region to then step down into a substation so that it can go to your homes. Because it can't go straight from a transmission or high tension line into your home, it's too high of voltage. So it does benefit, even if you don't have us as your distribution provider, it still benefits as in a trans, as a transmission provider. So I just wanted to kind of explain that, it's a little bit of a confusing thing, but I explain it as transmission is your 95 and then your distribution are your local streets.
Okay. Is that here?
Hi, I'm Candace Del Rio, I'm at 1 Houston Street. I don't know if you heard my name, Candace Del Rio. So I just wanna reinforce the concern for potential health risks. I will say risks because I know that the data out there is mixed, but certainly I feel that risk is worth investigating further, especially considering the potential cost. So I guess my question is really, I'm sorry, I have a small handful of questions. My questions really have to do with accountability, you know, once the line is put in place, how frequent is EMF gonna be monitored and, how frequently I should say, and for what duration? Is that gonna be for the life of the line in place or is that going to be for a finite amount? Sorry.
I can talk to that in general. We'll typically measure EMF if a homeowner require, requests a reading as was previously described. The Sighting Board sometimes asks us to do a follow-up reading after the, after the project is completed, so that's the kind of thing that might come out as a Sighting Board condition. That's usually, it's usually a one-time thing just to verify that the calculations were, you know, are reflecting reality. So there's not a routine reading of magnetic fields, but we do do it if the Sighting Board asks or if an individual homeowner would ask for it.
So I just would like to express my displeasure with that response, just because again, this line is gonna be a permanent fixture and we will be living here and if we don't live here, then others will be assuming our households and this is a buried line. I don't know what the markings will be like for this, whereas with an above-ground power line, you can clearly see that there's an above-ground power line and whatever your beliefs are, in terms of whether it causes or is potentially risk to, or linked to health risks, you can choose to avoid it or not. With an underground line, you don't see it, so that's a big concern for me. The other thing is, I'd like to know what the maximum amount of electrical transmission that will ever occur through the life of the Woburn to Wakefield power line and what measures will be put into place to ensure those maximum thresholds are not exceeded?
Yeah, the underground lines have what we call normal ratings, which are based on the ability to carry that power continuously. We also have emergency ratings that are used if, if something happens on the electric system and we can overload the lines for short periods of time. Most of the time, the lines don't operate anywhere near those ratings, but our, but our control centers, which are manned 24/7, 365, do look at the loadings on all of our transmission facilities and they, their job is to keep the lines within their ratings.
Okay, sorry, can I just ask one more question?
Sure.
Okay, so I just wanted to know, will the data available, I mean, will the data about the EMF levels, whether it's done one time or over a series of times, will that be made available to the public in real time at no cost, at any time really that the public requests it?
I just, I wanna know the phrasing because, for instance, right now, the EMF studies that were done prior to, those are available and those are on the EFSB?
Right. So I'm not asking, I'm asking about specific EMF levels that are done, you know, you had mentioned doing a one-time reading in people's homes. And I'm curious to know if, whenever the EMF levels are being monitored, whether it's once or multiple times, if that information will be made publicly available in real time at no cost to those requesting it, requesting that information? Should I rephrase?
Yes, please.
Okay, is everyone else also confused my question?
I'm not confused, but I'm just not so sure that an individual homeowner would necessarily want those publicized? So I don't, I think that might be an issue, I can imagine perhaps, so I'm not sure who would be the holder of that information to then put it out to the public.
So I guess really what I'm trying to get at is a level of transparency in terms of EMF levels and maybe it's not made publicly available on some forum, maybe it's just sent directly to the homeowner, whoever requests it, but I guess what I'd like to know is if that information is gonna be available readily, in real time, at no cost.
So there's no, there's no magic window that we have to say, "I'm gonna go," you know, somebody from 1 Houston Street called me, I'm gonna go on my computer and see what the EMF is at that point. We have to actually go out there with a device that actually measures it and reads it. So that's why I tell people, more than, we're more than willing to come out to your house and call, again, the hotline, we set up an appointment, we come and we meet you and we'll email you those results. You'll see them as well, like Mike will show them to you on the device and he'll say, "Okay, look, you can see this says point four two," or whatever the number is. So you're seeing the numbers in real time at your house for that, you know, for that time and then you get those emailed to you as the follow-up. But there's no way that at any point in time, if you call me, I can just magically come up with those numbers.
Right, I think I'm, I mean, I'm a master's prepared person, I mean, I can understand that, you know, certain equipment is required to measure these kinds of things, so I understand that. But I guess, again, my point is to just reinforce the level of transparency that's gonna be made available to people who are requesting this information. And, you know, in terms of any additional studies for follow-up of EMF levels, I think this information should be to some extent be made public because, you know, I mean, this is how we all learn, this is how we understand that EMF levels may or, may not be related to cancer or maybe it certainly is. So, you know, I think we just, again, have to be very careful with this because there is mixed data out there and mixed data doesn't mean that it's no problem, it means that there's reason for concern and to look further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Michael Leviniak, I live on 3 Stony Hill Lane. If possible, can we throw up that picture of the substation? So I live directly behind that substation, like within three hundred feet.
This way? Or that way?
That way, so go towards the center, down, right in, just go right in the middle of that white substation, right in the middle of the substation and just go like an inch to the left. Me, right there, that's where I live.
Hi.
Yeah, I moved here five years ago and- Yeah, I moved here five years ago, in surprise, didn't know this was going to happen. First, I'll speak about the process. You guys had some meeting back in April of 2015. I started a new position with work, so due to work obligations, I couldn't go to that meeting. And in most cases, most institutions usually have a follow-up date. So there wasn't really a makeup day of any sort. I mean, we even do that with basketball and other things, so there was no makeup for me to attend. Second, I know you guys did the door-to-door thing, but as a dual-income family, most people aren't home between nine and three.
We don't do them between nine and three.
Well, I know there was stuff left during the day, during the week, and nobody came by during the weekends. So that's just speaking to your process. So I have a couple of technical questions because of where I live. So the current substation is, what's the size from a KVA size? Can somebody speak to that? I know there's a bunch of technical guys over there, so somebody's gotta know.
Well, you've got a battery transformer there, we'd have to figure out the size. I wanna say it's about 1,600 MVA.
So what's the voltage going to that substation right now?
345.
345, what?
KV.
Thousand, KV.
KV, right now?
Yep.
Okay.
That's designed to do that, and then there's 115 that comes out, but also with the transformer.
Okay, and how much current is coming out of that substation?
At any given time, it varies, it depends on the load.
Okay, so during...
It's not a constant.
During the summer, when everybody's running air conditioners, about what?
You'll have a higher level, but it doesn't come out of just the station. There's multiple lines going and out of the facility. And each line carries a different load.
So what is it rated for? What is the maximum output?
The entire station? It's rated at, I think those are 400 MVA transformers, I'd have to go back and check, but it's 1,600 MVA if you add up all four transformers.
I had to do the math, but that's a lot of current. So, that's all, so what causes hum?
The steel in the transformer, based on the 60 cycle flipping back and forth.
Okay, have you guys ever walked behind there, like, at least on Stony Hill Lane? Any of you guys?
Yep.
And what did you hear?
Humming.
Lots of it, right? So I sent the petition from my street to Robert Shea, because I was unable to make that first meeting. The entire street signed it and said, "We have concerns about humming." That was about a year ago. I haven't, we haven't received anything from anybody within your organization. We've got guys drive by and say, "It's fine." So the humming is really loud right now, so I guess, what are we upgrading to? So now you said it's 400...
The cables won't impact the rating on the transformers.
But we're, so you're adding capacity to this, is that correct?
No.
You're not?
No. The transformer that we're adding to is to support the cables and the installation of the cable. It's not additional capacity.
Okay, so I guess the next question I have is, there was a proposal to minimize the noise and the humming here. At some point, there were two options, one option was thrown out. Is that because of cost? Because I know Brian had a concern with regards to aesthetics. So right now, I look back there when there's no leaves, and it looks terrible. So am I gonna have like this big gigantic thing that looks like...
So unfortunately, I apologize, unfortunately, that substation was built before I even moved up to New England. So I wasn't part of the team, and I wasn't aware of a lot of the issues that had happened during the construction of that substation. Ever since then, I have gone out there with Dan McIntyre, a different engineer, and we've gone out with the transmission engineers to see how we could mitigate that noise that everybody seemed to be complaining about, and also hear it for ourselves. Which was, one of the things that we added to that was also saying, you know, during any kind of construction that we have going on at the substation, we were gonna do a temporary sound wall as well, so that that sound wall that's there now wouldn't disappear, per se, while we're doing construction. We're working around it so that we can still have that, at least that noise still contained, for lack of a better word. Increasing the sound wall should also mitigate the noise that you're currently hearing. And what we can do, and what we had planned on doing during our construction open house, was to actually have our substation engineer there to kind of explain that. And some of the takeaways that I'll be taking tonight is really getting those answers for people that live around the substation, and possibly doing, you know, maybe some targeted outreach towards that area. And who did you say that you guys sent a letter to?
Robert Shea is, I believe, the attorney that is representing your organization on behalf of us, or something of that nature, but I have his information here.
He's the siding board?
He's the siding board, yeah. So that was, that was a year ago, so here we are about a year later, and you looked into it. So I guess, can somebody take an action on doing something at this point? Or are we gonna like a year from now say, "Well, yeah, we talked about it, we're still looking at it, and we're still thinking about it"?
I took, just to clarify, I took the action on some of this stuff from when we had the open house that unfortunately weren't able to attend. So that's where I kind of got my information from, from the abutters there that had shown up and told us about that. I wasn't aware of something going to Mr. Shea, unfortunately.
The entire street signed off on that, because the entire street, I believe, there's five residences on there that are complaining about the noise.
So if you wrote to Robert Shea, that would've been during the proceedings of the open house, was before? So they wouldn't have been aware of that? I'll try to find that letter, I don't recall that, he would've sent it to us, I'm gonna try to find that letter.
Actually, there were two neighbors, my next-door neighbor also sent a letter in, so I know there was at least two petitions that were sent in on behalf of the noise, the concerns, the wildlife, because all the wildlife is gonna be affected back there. So we have deers, we have all kinds of wild turkeys and all that, the natural wildlife is gonna be affected, if I'm not mistaken. I have a couple more questions here, so the potential devastation, if something was to short out or surge back there, what is that? Can somebody tell me what that is?
Potential what, I'm sorry?
Devastation, fallout. Like if something was to go wrong back there? Like if you guys decided to put another transformer in there, and something went boom?
We try to avoid boom.
No, I know that, but who is affected? So we're within 300 feet, so what does that mean?
Well, we have high-speed protection systems, that if you do have a fault, it takes the equipment off within cycles. Those are electric cycles, we talked about how there's 60 cycles in a minute? Second, I'm sorry, 60 cycles in a second. We have protection systems that takes off equipment in two cycles, in terms of isolating faults, or a problem with the transformer, something along those lines.
And who's maintaining this?
It's maintained by National Grid technicians.
Okay, and is there like continuous monitoring of this of some sort? Is it...
Yes, there's also other agencies like the Northeast Power Coordinating Council. We have to comply with their requirements in terms of our liability.
Okay, and I guess I have one last question, sorry, everybody. So who's gonna pay for the upgrades in 20 years? So when everything starts to wear down and everything's installed, who's paying for that? If maintenance is required, or in 10 years?
In terms of the substation?
In terms of the grid, the substation, the cabling, the entire...
That's owned by National Grid, it would be their responsibility if something had to be replaced or, you know, wore out, or there was some type of a maintenance issue.
Okay, and I forgot this one for all the people who have kids. What time do you guys start planning work in the morning? Is it 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM, if this does good pass? Because that's another thing that's important, some guys will start at 6:00, and then they go through like 9:00 o'clock.
They can't start at 6:00.
Yeah, Steve?
They're not supposed to start at 6:00.
We have a bylaw in town that requires work hours 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. In our discussions, they do not plan to work past, I believe, 5:00 o'clock. If they were to go past 7:00 on that Monday through Saturday to 7:00 AM in the morning, and there may be a reason for that, that would require a permit from the town, which would go through the normal permitting process. And usually that, we try not to give those out. It doesn't allow for work on Sundays, that would also require a permit. And there may be a reason to do that, but right now, we don't foresee any.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Hello, my name's Rick Stewart, and I am the person, the 157 Salem Street, that was the intervenor from the beginning. I have so many questions, I'm not gonna be able to ask them all tonight. I recommend that there's a postponement on this, and there's a little bit more input for the community in this process. The reason being, obviously, the first thing is, it was only the one meeting back in April of 2015. There was no EFSB meeting in town, even though we're the primary area where the majority of the work is gonna occur. In addition, we also have the substation work being done. Beyond that, and one of the concerns I have is, a significant number of people in Wakefield were not noticed as part of this process. So they never had an opportunity to attend either the meeting in Wakefield or to attend the EFSB meeting in Stonem. And I'm not talking a couple, 150 separate parcels were not noticed, representing hundreds of people in Wakefield. None of those people were ever noticed about this project, so they never got a chance to go to any of those meetings. Several months later, they were given a documentation, sent in the mail. You have two weeks, and there's a multi-step process you have to go through if you want to either be an intervenor or a limited partner in this proceeding, of which, you know, that's just ridiculous, that wasn't gonna work out. That's not right, and those people never had that opportunity, including the people on Stony Lane. They were a group of people that were not noticed. People on the right-of-way also were not noticed, specifically that condominium development off of, what's that street down there? Can't think of the name off the top of my head. The problem they're having down there is, and one of the things I mentioned, Selectman Valley had mentioned was, they're gonna come and pave, they're gonna trim some stuff back, and that's gonna be the end of it. That's not what that process is gonna be on the right-of-way. By their own definition, more than 500 trees are gonna need to be removed as part of that process. There's a 30-foot temporary construction area, where they're gonna think about it, they're gonna go a mile, 30 feet across, they're gonna clear cut everything. So those condominium developments on Richardson, all the people that live off of Vernon that have those elevated houses, what are they gonna see permanently now? They're gonna see the industrial area, they're gonna see the backs of dumpsters on Main Street? That's really what we want? I don't think those people want that, and many of those people weren't even notified of this. Now granted, we're gonna have some mitigation. Understand that 500 tree they're talking about, they had some parameters, one of which being is, they're at least 20 feet tall. Well, there's a lot of smaller trees in there. And in the summertime, people like to go in their backyards, they wanna enjoy their time with their families. You're gonna look out over that permanently? We're gonna put some bushes in, put some grass in, put up a fence? I mean, think about that, that's permanent, that's not, we're gonna fix that and make it better again. Plus, there's extensive contamination. In fact, there's contamination on a portion down there that violates both EPA and Masti EP standards. Now, you can have a mitigation person come in there, but again, you live around there? You think your kids are gonna go play out there? That's right. They're gonna put one of those big splice vaults out, they're gonna bring cranes out there, they're not building a rail track back there. They're building a road to the purposes of the construction and maintenance of that transmission corridor. That's an age-20 loaded access road, that's 16,000-pound vehicles, this is no bike path. This is a road that they're building for the maintenance of their project. And whether or not you want to have them pave it over or not, now we're gonna make an area where kids are gonna go out there at night, you're gonna create problems back there. Is that really where we want to do this? And did we get any feedback from any about this? No, we didn't. Now all of a sudden, we decide this is this great project that's gonna do this thing, why are we even talking about a rail trail? We already have the walk around the lake, and we have a nature walk, it's called Breakheart. Why are we adding a third one? It doesn't, we don't even have legislative agreement on this. And we're gonna say people come to Wakefield and look at our dumpsters? Go look at the cement company? Go watch, look behind the buildings in the industrial area? Why would people come down here and want to do that? If we ever do have a rail trail, and nobody here can say that it's gonna happen at this point? If you look at the documentation from the MPO, even from 2014 on, this project is maybe, at best. There's no guarantee this is gonna happen, so we're gonna have a mile-long corridor through the center of town? Paved, for what? For what purpose? It doesn't make sense, I don't get it. There's other places that we could put this. Yeah, I advocated for new Salem Street as one, there was another option, going down off the Hunt Street, stays completely out of the area, that's what I originally was advocating for. Cheaper, half a mile shorter, millions of dollars cheaper, and you don't have to cut down any trees? That concerns me. And Mr. Fowler, you made a comment that when they were talking about, "How did this company all this time get this right to bypass our zoning?", well, somebody signed off on it. Not that there's a conflict, but I know an individual that lives on one of those roads for another path there. Why are they signing off on stuff that you guys aren't even aware of? I'm not saying there's a conflict, but there certainly was a potential for a conflict there. This is unacceptable. And I don't see how it got to this point, we're three years into this. This is the first actual meeting that anybody here's been invited to from the Town of Wakefield. And I should know, I've been at this for three years. I've been at the town's website, there's been nothing, you couldn't find something if you looked for it. Zero. Even when people, when you knew 150 people were not noticed, why did you ask for a meeting? Either expect them to have a meeting, or call the own meeting for the town. Why did that happen? That's my first question.
No applause, please, thanks, thanks. Okay, you all said on that question...
Yes, why was there no movement from the town to either have their own meeting or instruct the companies to have another meeting for those people? We're talking hundreds of people.
Okay.
Let me respond to that. What I'm hearing here is a common theme, this is what I was happy to, looking forward to hearing from the public. Obviously, there's concerns about safety, your concern about, you know, what I'm envisioning as a rail trail, and you're now describing as a, you know, a two-lane highway, you know, through the middle of town, gives me pause, so...
A star right through the center of town.
Yeah, I'm with you, so I'm just, you know, I'd like to give these folks a chance to respond to that, but what I'm sensing is, with the line of people behind you, who I think we'll all hear from tonight, perhaps, you know, why not now, right? If people want more information and want more disclosure, and I'm interested in hearing myself, what issues come up and what the responses are? You know, there's no reason we can't schedule some sort of public forum, an event like this, probably right here, where you don't also have to listen to us approve donations to the library and things like that as part of the process, but where you can actually have more open dialogue. I think it's certainly called for and worthy, and people of the town deserve, you know, that amount of opportunity to be heard and to listen and learn. So, I mean, I would propose, or I won't make a motion at this point, but I'll propose to this board that we consider, you know, sponsoring something like that, not have it be a board meeting, but actually work with Steve to schedule some sort of forum. And I think that one of the ways that those get, those are best kind of produced or orchestrated, if you will, is if people communicate their concerns, like we are tonight, I'm sure they're taking good notes, I know we are up here about what the concerns are, communicate those ahead of time, and give these folks a chance to prepare answers, and come in and kind of let them start with, here's all those things we heard from you, we've bucketed them perhaps into, you know, here's one about EMF, here's one about the, you know, the rail trail effect, or what they're gonna do in that rail bed, here's why we didn't go down to Hunt Street, whatever all the issues are, and let them kind of knock them out one by one, and then go to a Q and A. I'm sure nobody, I'm sure not everybody will be satisfied with every answer, I wouldn't expect that, but I think it's pretty efficient to allow that to be kind of the opening salvo of an event like that. So that might be a nice opportunity, and I don't see any reason why it's something we couldn't get scheduled in the next, I don't know, two, three weeks, 30 days, anyway? It would seem reasonable, I would ask you folks to opine on that if you wanted more time or something like that. But I think the town deserves it, you deserve it, everybody here deserves an opportunity, again, to be heard, and then also make sure you come and listen to, because, you know, sometimes not everything they say or do is bad. And there's probably some things that could be brought to light and be remedied through that process, like you're talking about the rail trail. So anyway, I think it's high time that we do that and create that opportunity. This isn't the forum at what's officially a public hearing at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on a, you know, Monday night here. This isn't the forum for us to have out all these issues, because we'll be here all night, but I think it'd be a nice opportunity to get something like that on the books at a time that's convenient for everybody here, too. Obviously, evening, we've heard, is more preferable than 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And schedule something that will work for everybody, and let them come prepared to answer all the right questions, and you guys should come prepared to, you know, to voice your concerns. So, not that we will cut short the whole, the input tonight for people who invested the time to come here, we'll hear from everybody. We'll hear from everybody, I assume if it's okay with the chair, sorry, but we'll, we'll hear from everybody, but maybe we won't provide in-depth answers to every single, or they won't provide an in-depth answer to every concern, but it's a good time to kind of create that critical list of items that need to be addressed, which is kind of what we're doing here. We're saying, hey, come back with answers to these questions. I think what we need to do is create the opportunity in the forum for them to come back and for, for folks to be satisfied.
I understand, but I still haven't gotten an answer to my question. Yet 150 people that were never notified, why? That was over a year ago, year and a half ago.
I, I am not in charge of the notification, so...
Were you aware of this?
Yes.
Was everybody else aware of it that's a member of the board?
I think everybody in this board from...
No, the non-notification.
Oh, the non-notification?
Yes.
I thought you meant the whole project.
No, I'm talking about the 150 people.
I've been knowing about it for years, so, I don't know about the non-notification. I, I also, I don't, I don't know about it. So, I, I'd challenge the, the, our, our company here to state why or whether they...
It was our own town assessor's office.
What's that?
It was our own town's assessor's office that failed to provide an accurate count is where the problem is.
Okay.
It's not okay, sir.
Can I, can I just ask for some detail on the 150 people and...
Yeah.
Yeah, in fact, your, the attorneys for your firm were the ones that actually made the posting to the EFSB, saying we had to postpone the hearing because people weren't noticed.
I think that was, I don't believe that was in Wakefield, but that's...
Yes, it was. There's 150 separate entries.
150 in Wakefield?
I have the paperwork right with me, if you'd like to see it to review it.
Right, so...
It was in Wakefield.
Was it in Wakefield?
Yes.
That was, okay.
Wakefield and Winchester.
Right.
222 total entries, 150 in Wakefield.
That's right, it was. There's some in, in Wakefield, and there are some in another town as well.
Including people down there on the rail trail.
That's right.
It wasn't our mistake?
Excuse me, on Fitch Court.
It was the assessor's.
The condominiums down.
It was the assessor's.
They were the people. And they have the biggest impact, because not only do they have to deal with the loss of the trees, they have to deal with the contamination, they have to deal with having one of those huge splice vaults put in there. Another thing to mention is, depending on the geometry of the, the lines, they change significantly. Some are going to be, and again, inverted delta, others are going to be horizontal, other verticals, others are going to be bends. All of those are going to represent different levels of EMF. If you review the engineering drawings, and I'm assuming you guys haven't, take a look at this stuff. I've been immersed in this for three years, and believe me, there's a lot of things and people are kind of dusting over that really don't represent what's actually happening. And I'm more than willing to represent and give my time, if you guys wanted to help out, I'm more than willing to do it, but there's a lot that's being missed here. And it's frustrating for people like myself. At the end of the day, if it's where it has to go, it's where it has to go, but there's too much dancing around, there's been too much lack of transparency in this. And I'm appalled, I'm going to be honest. I cannot believe my town has gone three years with this, and they've had an agreement since March of 2015 of what they wanted to do. To have a meetings after the fact and say, well, you know, let's have a meeting, it's already done. You've already decided what's going to happen. All that's left now is, you know, well, you know, well, you know. That's not acceptable. And this should have never have come to this. And here we sit now. I vote for you people. I vote for you because I want you to represent me. I see documentation saying we can't go down New Salem Street because the businesses need to have 24-hour access on both ways. There's nobody open 24 hours on New Salem Street. Why are we running lines past people's houses when we have an industrial area? Why aren't they going down there? It doesn't make sense. Flatter, straighter, less cost. It's unacceptable. Again, I could go on here all night, maybe we need to have another meeting. And I'm more than willing to offer my time if it's going to help. But this is unacceptable, and deeply disappointed with my elected officials at this point. If you're not representing us, why are we representing absentee landlords and out of town commuters? Why do they get precedent over us? Unacceptable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so again, again, no, no applause, Ken.
Bob from Laughlin, 376 Water Street. I've got a construction question. What is, at what level, low-grade, street level, what is the deepest level of the duct bank going in for your project? How deep is it going to go?
Subject to check, I think the deepest installation might be 12 feet deep, something like that.
Okay. So, in relationship to all the other utilities that we already have in our street, the sewer lines, the drainage lines for the groundwater, our gas lines, some electrical lines, how does that all coordinate with your, with your project? Are our lines underneath your project, or is your project underneath our stuff that's already in the ground?
What we're, what we're doing, and we've been, we've been working with the light and gas company and the Public Works group in town, we, we mapped out where we think all the existing utilities are. We, we looked at laneways where we could fit our facilities. When we cross other utilities, we're generally going to be going under them just because we're trying to maintain a minimum burial depth for this cable, and there's usually not room to snake it between existing utilities, so we're generally going under utilities when we cross. We try not, we try not to build a line on top of utilities for any appreciable length because we have to maintain our facility and the other utility owners have to maintain their, their facilities. So it's, it's been a long process of figuring out where, where all the existing utilities are. We're doing test holes in areas where we need to be more sure of elevations, things like that. But, but we're generally, I'll say, we're generally either in clear laneways, or in most cases, if we're crossing utilities, we're going under them.
Well, that's generally, and for the consideration for the selectmen, and this is where I'm going, I'm looking on the long view here, because every single time we have to go into our streets, and we have to go into them quite often, either to maintain our utilities, particularly with water leaks, some of our infrastructure is relatively old, or we have to swap out a gas line, or we have to do almost anything, anything in our streets at all, and now we have to interact with a very high voltage line. And, so, for the consideration for the selectmen, in the long haul, every single time we have to go in there and we have to work around your project to do our projects. As a ratepayer, either through water, electricity, or gas, you know, we, stakeholders in Wakefield have to pay for that. And we're talking not just a year, we're talking the rest of, you know, the rest of, the rest of our lives. We're going to have to deal with that infrastructure that's going in. Either it's a top, hopefully it's all underneath it, but, you know, we don't know that, you know. I, I don't have a plan for it, I don't have a cross-section of what this is going to look like from point A to point B. I suspect it's going to interact with some of the utilities that we already have in here, above or below, and I think it's going to be a problem. And so regardless of how much tax revenue is promised from this project, I think it's going to come back to bite us in the long haul. But that's the, and the other thing is, is this act, is this line just basically a backup for the transmission lines that's already in place? Or is this thing going to be on all the time unless there's a problem up above with the existing transmission lines? In other words, is it on all the time? Can it be turned off?
Yeah, the line will be, what we say, energized all the time. It'll be connected through, through, between the two substations, so it'll, it'll normally carry whatever power wants to flow through the line, just based on where it's connected in the system and on how much power people are calling for. If we get, if we get into contingency situations, it means some other line or some generator goes out of service, then the line will carry more power. But yes, it is, it is part of the interconnected transmission system, so it'll generally be connected in.
But you already have one, you have the existing transmission system, that's going to stay in place even after this transmission line is in. This is the electrician in me. You know, our load in this, in this country with LED lighting and all the, all the equipment that's manufactured now, including air conditioning and stuff, our load in this country is going down, it's not going up. You know, so I'm trying to figure out why we need to, to, unless it's just a backup, which it sounds like it probably is, but you tell me.
So one of the things that, that I explain to people is that I grew up in a household and we had one TV, and we had one computer that we shared. And now you go into a home and everyone has a TV, everybody has an iPad, everyone has a laptop, everybody has something that they plug in, whether it's one cellphone, or if you're like me and you have two cellphones. So even though we're using, you know, and we're, we're pushing a lot of this, things like LED lights and, and energy efficiency, there's still load growth, there's still economic development in areas. So we have these, these transmission lines, think of it as another lane on the highway. So you have more, if you're, if you want more commuters coming in, you build an additional lane. Or if you're like me and you have to travel 128, there's now another, another lane on 128 because of the demand and people using that road. Same thing with the transmission system, except instead of us going above, we're going underground on this, on, on this project. But the demand is there, that's why we're building this.
Well, there's demand here, but I believe that, you know, seriously, I think the demand is going down, it's not going up. That's just, and besides that, we're pretty well built out. We're not, there's not going to be six new office parks going in Wakefield. You know, we're, we're pretty much built out around here. This isn't Nebraska, you know, where they're going to build another whole city or something. So I don't, I'm not really buying that, but I just wanted to, the main reason I came up here was the consideration for the selectmen to understand, you know, that this infrastructure, we're going to have to deal with this in relationship to everything else we've got in the ground going forward, you know, fixing, repairing, and maintaining. Thank you very much.
Sean Madrison, 171 Salem Street. I think everyone's taken the wind out of my sails and already mentioned what I was going to mention, so I'll just read what I have. Just two quick quotes. Winchester, obviously, is, is in a similar boat, and they have a website called change.org. And there were two comments in that I thought were relevant, they have been stated, but I'd like to state them again. In previous decisions regarding new transmission lines, the Mass Energy Facilities Citing Board has recognized that a number of studies show a statistical association between residential distances from transmission lines and human health effects. And that some epidemi, I can't even say this word well, epidemiologic, I think you know what I'm trying to say, epidemiological studies...
Epidemiology.
There you go. Suggests a statistical correlation between exposure to magnetic fields and childhood leukemia. The second quote is, a site from another energy company website, excelenergy.com. Underground transmission does not, underground transmission lines do not mitigate electric magnetic fields because the earth does not provide shielding. EMF intensity levels may be higher above an underground installation as compared to over, to, as compared to overhead lines. Those are on the Winchester site, relative to what you were asking about getting more information, because to me, that's a, it's a wide open gap. So now I'll make it a little more personal. My house sits 20, 28 feet from the edge of Salem Street. My kids' bedrooms are in front of the side of the house. This means that they will spend 10 to 12 hours per day just 30 to 40 feet from these lines, which is about where that board is. On April 28th of this year, I sent an email to the Mass-N-Hampshire Solution Project to request adding the new line along New Salem Street variation instead of Salem Street, which covers the same length in need. I did not get any response to my email, so I'm asking for this now. If this line is laid down along the New Salem Street variation, there are many fewer homes along the stretch of New Salem Street, excuse me, I have a cold, than in the stretch of Salem Street as originally proposed. Per my count, the stretch in question would affect 20 homes on New Salem Street versus 38 to cover us at the same distance, point to point. Obviously, there are several businesses along the New Salem Streets, New Salem approach. Running a line in the New Salem Street path would be a fair request if the National Grid and the Emmett Massachusetts EFSB were looking to minimize the potential negative impact to the citizens of Wakefield that were being imposition by this effort. This approach would minimize the homes that may be affected considering potential hazards to existing homeowners. I recognize that parts of New Salem are prone to water issues, but this could be a good time to remedy the situation for Wakefield once and for all. With modern technologies, I'm sure there are ways to bury this line efficiently on New Salem Street. A couple of notes as I was standing in line. You had mentioned that, you know, your gentleman don't come between 9:00 and 3:00. I actually had to go home for lunch one day, and sure enough, the gentleman was, as I was walking in my house, handing me a flyer saying, we're putting in this line, do you have any questions?
I apologize, Len, because they're not supposed to be doing that at that time.
And the other time, I came home and there was a letter that somebody else mentioned. That doesn't give me any real effort, real incentive to, to figure out what's going on. Relative to the forum, I also suggest, if there's one or two, if we do wind up hiring an attorney, it would make sense to have that attorney there to be able to actually answer some of these questions. Thank you very much.
My name is CJ Loes, I live at 72 Bennet Street, and I definitely haven't heard anything about this project until my wife told me when she heard on social media. So, I mean, we've lived there since, for, since 2007, she stays at home, so she would have heard it, you know, somebody would have, she would have been home and somebody came by. So we definitely didn't hear about anything, any of anything about it, so there's definitely a flaw in your, you know, notification system. You may say you paid somebody to do it, but did you, did you actually check that? I mean...
Yeah, I, no, I, I...
Other than, hey, did you go down that street? Great, thanks.
No, I get, I, I, and I, and I appreciate everybody's concern, and I'm fine with that. And I respect that, you know, again, my teams are human, and I'm human as well, and we make mistakes, but I, I don't just ask people and point and say, did you go down this street? I get reports.
Okay. 150 people, or homes plus me, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty bad margin of completion.
Well, I'll take that into...
It's fine.
No, no, I want to answer that because I don't appreciate the tone of voice, because I'm very respectful. So, that 150 parcels that were said that were missed, that was actually a mistake on the town assessor when we go and we ask for information. So mistakes happen, and I'm more than willing to accept that mistakes happen, and I will do my very best to rectify them as anybody would. So if you tell me that you haven't received any information, I'm more than happy to have Darren take down your number and, and your, your address, and we'll go through our records, and anything that we've sent before, we will mail it all to your house, and we'll go to your house and we'll speak to whoever, you know, if it's your wife or it's, or if it's you, and update you on everything that we've done up to date, as we would with anyone that asked us. What I'm just asking for is that understands that we do do the best that we can, and mistakes will happen, and instead of just, you know, giving me an attitude about it, the best way to do it is say, here's my address, and can we talk? And I'm more than willing to sit down and talk.
I have a question regarding that, Ben. When did you find out about this, the people who weren't informed?
About the 100, the, the people in the condos? When we found out about that, we immediately rectified that through the legal department.
Hey, just, cut, cut in. Just so everybody knows, and I'm not trying to defend anybody here, just to be clear, the way it works in, in all of these matters is, in a ZBA matter or any type of matter we have to notify our butters, is, it's not up to National Grid to decide who the butters are. They, they take the requirement down to our assessor's office, who then figures out who the butters are, and certifies a list and says, these are your butters. If you notify these people, you have complied with the law. If you notify these people, you have complied with the law." And the mistake is, and it, of, I think it was like 1,600 homes that got notified, it sounds like a, uh, one address condominium with, with a number, a multi-unit dwelling, um, was missed, or a few of them, or whatever it was, which meant the 150 got cut up, but the other, you know, 1,450 were properly notified. So it's, this particular part of this falls into, you know, innocent mistake, and it was on the part of the town, and they were fully entitled to rely on the accuracy of the list that we certified to them.
Okay.
And, and, yeah, I'm sorry. And so, so that one's, that one's not on them.
Sure.
Just, just to, just to be clear.
And, and so, and, and obviously it was.
Was the situation rectified?
It was rectified according to how the EFSP wanted us to rectify it.
So we, we did, as soon as we found out, we notified the EFSP, and, um, what they required us to do was to re-notify everyone who didn't receive notice, and then also allow them additional time, because the time to intervene had expired. Allow them time to intervene into the proceeding.
Sure. I mean, I'm not part of that group. Uh, I still live on Bennett Street, so I thought that was within the two blocks, but apparently not. Um, my other question was, earlier in the meeting, you said that regardless of what this board does, that you can still get approval above them. Um, is that, so, so basically, this whole meeting has no, no consequences?
We're going to work with the board, we're going to work with you guys.
Well, but you specifically said, you know, "I don't mean to be rude," or whatever you said, "But whatever you guys decide to do, we can go above you, and it doesn't matter." Is that accurate?
That was probably coming out of the frustration of.
But it's accurate.
I think legally, it's accurate. If by some reason, we don't get the approval here, but we want to work with the town, we don't want to have to go to the EFSP.
Right. So you can come through the town and do whatever you want, if you get your right approval, regardless of what the town wants.
Right. And the pro, and that, that's, I think my frustration was that the process where all this input could have been considered happened over the last two years, and these were thing, good things that we could have been talking about and considering, and now we're at the point where we're getting the approval for, we're about to get some approval, we're not sure exactly what it's going to be, we're not, I'm not being presumptuous about what it will say, and, um, now we're trying to come and get our local permits, and there are a lot of questions being asked that we could have handled the last two years. I think that's where my frustration was happening, but we want to work with the town, obviously.
Okay. I would just like to submit that if every town that this product is going through, except for us, had an issue with it, and they contested it, then there's something going on that, why, why did Wakefield not have this issue when every other town had the issue? And there's probably something to do with either the, the board, or somebody wasn't, you know, didn't know what was going on, or this, this public didn't know what was going on, because I think it would have.
Don't blame the board. Don't blame the board, actually.
I'm not blaming, I'm just saying, I think that there's a lack of communication.
Stonem, was just, so, Woburn was, it was actually 50%, Stonem and Winchester had their issues, Stonem was very concerned that, with traffic, um, and the proximity to that street, right?
Regardless, there was concerns, and there was no concerns brought up by Wakefield, or not that I can tell.
So can I just respond to that? There were concerns brought up by Wakefield.
Okay.
And I was on the board two years ago, we had a board of selectmen meeting, it's posted, National Grid came and presented, the public was, was, um, notified of our meeting at that time, a butters, not all, it appeared, were, um, notified. I never heard, Brian never heard, this concern two years ago. If we had, of course, we would have been more involved, of course, we would have, would have, um, addressed some of these issues. We just didn't hear it, so we didn't know.
I, I just would like to.
Okay, excuse me! You don't yell from the floor, sir. I know you weren't notified, and I just said that. What I'm, no, excuse me. Board of Selectmen meetings are posted, our agenda is posted, the fact that, um, National Grid presented was posted, it's on TV, the PowerPoint was posted, it, I'm sure you all watch WCAT with regularity. So what I'm saying is, we thought we were doing what we normally do on some of these projects. We talked about it in the paper, we talked about it amongst the board, we did not know this underlying issue. If we had, other people weren't on the board, Brian and I would have certainly suggested that we have more of these hearings. We have children that, that live in this town, we have children that have gone to these school systems, so we're not sitting up here in ivory towers, we're, we live in this town with you. Um, so I think Brian's proposal that we take a step back and have some sort of forum for everyone to come out and, um, have more of a Q and A, where I'm taking obviously copious notes of things that I didn't hear about two years ago. Is that my fault? Probably absolutely, that I didn't do more research on the project sounded like it was a posi, positive project. It sounded like we had, I know Steve was very involved in it, that we pushed back on some of the routes, that we pushed back against Stonem, who was, you know, concerned about traffic impacting themselves, not so much us. So there was involvement. Um, and that, we're having an, a hearing now, so that's why I think we'll continue it. Brian?
Yeah. Hey, I just, I mean, when, when we do good things in this town, amazing opposition comes out of the woodwork. So, um, for this to have received, uh, you know, we're burying power lines in the streets in front of your homes, uh, to be, have been made public, uh, a few years ago, and had a public meeting, in fact, this exact same forum, a board of selectmen meeting, and nobody seemed to care then, 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 I think it was pretty reasonable for us to say, "Okay, we're, we're, we're good, and we'll proceed forward." Um, uh, and it wasn't us who proceeded and negotiated with them or anything like that, it was, "Okay, we understand where you're at, good luck with your project, come back when you need your approvals," and, and they went off and went through their paces and hearings, and, uh, and all the processes and diligence you heard about with the board that they have to go in front of. So, um, you know, this was made public, and it, there's, there's no hiding anything or anything like that. I mean, it was, it was very public, just nobody picked up on it, you know, and I don't know, we've had this come up before, where people, um, pound the table with, "We need more transparency." You know, I, I, I don't know, sometimes we put things out there, and people pick up on it, and sometimes things get put out, and somehow, nobody cares, it just, it does, it just gets missed. So, um, not missed, but just there isn't enough of a, a tide of concern that, that comes up. And it's amazing that the little things that become big, and the big things that just don't, don't get any airtime, and this apparently was a big thing that didn't get any airtime among, among the public. And, uh, not blaming people, it's just kind of, it's interesting to watch. I've been doing this for, you know, coming up on two decades now, and, um, it's weird the things that are small. If somebody wants to put up a deck, you get 40 people with pitchforks and, and torches, uh, lined up outside the meeting room, and then you want to build a substation, and two people show up. So, um, I can't, there's no rhyme or reason to it, it just kind of happens. But what you can do is, when you realize this is where we're at, as we keep saying, is let's, let's create the opportunity to have public input, uh, on this at this point. It, it is, it is late, but it's not too late. So, so let's hear those concerns, and let's, let's understand, um, what we can do. They said they would like to work with the town, working with the town is, is two-way, so we need to, uh, listen as well as speak, and certainly, uh, always speak with a level of decorum and respect, that, you know, one of my rules is I always think about the people sitting in front of me, which of them i, as an individual, is a bad person? You know, take a look at them, who, who's the bad person over there? Because guess what, it's none of them, right? They just have jobs, right? They, they have families and lives and things, and they're just doing a job. So, um, I, I would request that we all just try to be careful, I know it's emotional and passionate matter, but always err on the side of respect and dignity. Um, and that's the better way for us to get to some sort of agreement, or if we want to change, uh, it's, it's always, it's always better to approach, approach it a little more professionally. So, nobody did anything evil here, it might be a bad situation, but, but nobody tried to make it bad.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak disrespectfully to you, apparently.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It wasn't just you, it was, it was everybody, a lot of folks.
So, have you listened to the background?
Um, excuse.
Now you are.
Hi, I'm Christine Ryu, I live at 22 Woodland Road, and I actually am an epidemiologist, and, uh, have done health risk assessment for over 20 years, and I think that there are enough uncertainties and unanswered questions in this project, that it would be a great idea for the town to get an outside, uh, person to look at this, and to help guide the town in this. And, um, in terms of the process, I, I do have some concerns, because I had the opportunity to look through the docket and the materials there, and, and saw that as early as, um, 2015, some of the Wakefield citizens were submitting petitions with concerns, and, uh, Stonem submitted their petition to intervene in December of 2015, Winchester submitted their petition to intervene in January of 2016, Woburn submitted their petition to intervene in July of 2016, but Wakefield didn't submit a petition to intervene until October of 2016. So I think, you know, some time really passed along the way there. And in terms of the, the only, like, really substantive document that I was able to find that, uh, was submitted to the docket from the, the town, was, um, in July, excuse me, in January 2017, an initial brief. And, um, I, it's, it's unclear, like, how, what kind of review that went through, if that was put forth in any of the selectmen meetings, or the town meetings beforehand, if people had an opportunity to comment on that. But one of the things that really does concern me was a paragraph in there that said, "From the beginning, Wakefield adopted the constructive view that it was better to work with the companies," those being the, um, energy companies, "than to be stubbornly adversarial. Discussions between the town and the companies began early, in or about October 2014, and continued into March 2015, by which time the parties had reached agreement." And this is referring to the, the preferred route or the hybrid route. So really, quite early, it seems, unless I'm misreading this, there was a decision made, uh, that the parties had reached about the project, but that was even before the first public meeting happened in April 2015. So I'm not sure, you know, how to kind of put those two pieces of information together in my mind, but I know there's a lot of pent-up questions in energy in this room, and in terms of the process and the number of meetings that were held, it seemed like there were a lot of meetings that took place with the town administrator, and the, and the DPW, but I saw two meetings where the public was, you know, really engaged. Um, maybe they knew about the meetings and were, you know, were able to open public process, maybe they could come to the meetings, but if they didn't know about them, I think that, you know, there's, there's still a lot of unanswered questions, and I can see the reason why.
Okay, thank you. Steve, one second.
I'll, I'll take a little bit. The board of selectmen in 2015, we're given the presentation beforehand with the, the route that we had discussed, that was then, um, put at the public forum on, I think, April 30th, at that, at that same year. Uh, and I will tell you that maybe my office received one call, uh, questioning the route, that, that we had, that the selectmen had been presented and had been proposed, which was the route that you're looking at today. Um, probably, I've received four or five calls in my office since this whole process has begun, even through today. I will say that Mr. Seward, yeah, you, you, you'd be wanting, I'm counting him in there. Uh, Mr. Seward, I will say, has been very vigilant, and he's been at every one of those hearings at the Siting Board. Um, I know that, uh, we spoke to him, Mr. Stinson and myself, and Mr. Mullen on many occasions, uh, at those occasions at those boards. So I will say, he has been very diligent. Um, but I will tell you that those board hearings at the E, at the Siting Board were all about each community wanting to go this route or that route, for whatever, whatever reasons they had within their community. Um, you know, Stonem wanted to go this way, Stonem wanted to flip the whole thing and have the project come down Prospect Street, through Wakefield, down Church Street, down Salem, which didn't make sense for us because of the narrowing the road, of a lot of the other utilities and what have you. Um, that was discussed during the intervention. Um, Winchester and, um, Woburn had a lot of the same sort of, uh, dynamics between them about where it was going, you know, vis a vis their communities, and then how it hit into Stonem. So that's what those Siting Board hearings were about, a lot of talking about routes, and what routes were better for each community. So it was kind of an, it was a really interesting process, um, when we were there, and, um, I will say that, um, some of the other communities, uh, paid a lot of money, um, for the, uh, for other attorneys, I wouldn't want to have anybody other than Tom Mullen, who's way underpaid, who didn't charge us any extra for this, to, uh, to handle this, so, uh, that was what those hearings were about. Interesting, interesting enough, just let me finish, and then I'll, I'll answer. Interesting enough, I was at those hearings, at three or four of them, and, uh, Mr. Stinson would have been at four or five, and Mullen, Mr. Mullen may be at, at the same number, I mean, I missed one. Interestingly enough, there was never any discussion at any of the hearings I was at, and maybe I missed it, maybe it was the one I missed, about EMF, which to me was pretty interesting.
Okay, so just to clarify, the document that Mr. Mullen wrote, that I'm reading from, from, um, January 2017, where he says, "Discussions between the town and the companies began early, and the, uh, the parties reached an agreement March 2015." What was the agreement that was reached?
I think the agree, the agreement was, when we, when we presented to the board of selectmen, we looked at the different routes, and how it was going to come through, uh, Wakefield, and in 2015, I believe the date was, um, April, excuse me, March 23rd, there was a presentation to the board of selectmen regarding a preferred route, that Mr. Stinson and, uh, uh, MLD, other DPW factors, town engineer and myself, thought made more sense for us logistically in the town.
Hi, Casey Griffin, Fort Pilgrim Road. First, start out with a comment to thank the board, you guys have done a lot to promote and protect public interest, and you probably don't hear that enough, so thank you. Steve, it's Casey Griffin from Fort Pilgrim Road.
Okay, Casey, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, this is a question regarding the benefits, if we could go back to the project benefit slide? Just trying to kind of get behind, uh, some of the commentary I'd heard in the presentation, specifically around the tax benefits, I think the project manager, forgive me, I can't remember your name, you commented that the projected estimated tax revenues would be reduced by a source of amortization. Just want to try to understand what that amortized basis is. Is it the cost of the project itself? Is the reduction a cost recovery vehicle? If it's not that, what is it? Could you give us some context? How big is that amortized pool? How many years does it go out, et cetera?
I'll take it for, um, for Dick. So, my unders, what we did was, um, because obviously the ultimate property tax will have to be determined by Wakefield, but just to give Wakefield a sense of what they can anticipate in the former tax revenues, we took the 15.5 million, which I understand is what the investment, the portion of the Wakefield project, the Woburn Wakefield project, that's the cost within Wakefield, and we gave it to our property tax department, and based on, um, the tax rate and their understanding of how Wakefield taxes our infrastructure, they came up with, uh, basically the first five years of what they think would be our tax liability to Wakefield. And then, um, you know, with each year, and I'm not an accountant, or don't understand, but it gets depreciated over a, a period of years, not going to go, go back and find out if it's 20 or 30, I can't quite remember that. So each, each year, it's like slightly less, slightly less, slightly less, the tax revenue. Um, but at least because we don't, we can't really represent this is exactly what it is, what our tax department did was at least come up with what they anticipate would, would be the first five years, which would be 1.58, with a maybe slight decrease each year, and then it would just keep decreasing incrementally after that as well.
Okay. Is that information that could be made available through the, uh, sources that are being public po, publicly posted?
I can, I, I, I don't, it would just, it's just like a little spreadsheet for the first five years, so I don't see why not.
Yeah, it'd be great, just to have some context on the economic benefits, which you're promoting as being good for the town, so, thanks for that.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Good evening, um, thank you for, for taking all these comments, and for, for sticking through this. I appreciate all the work of the board of selectmen. My name's Michelle Bachman, I live at 215 Salem Street. Um, I'm a, a butter to the proposed route, and, um, myself and a number of my neighbors are here, and we had, we'd sent you a letter today, and I hope you'll take a look at that. We have a lot more thoughts beyond, um, what we wrote there. Um, I, I guess before I get into my two main points that are in the letter, I, I did want to just throw something out there that I don't think has been mentioned about process, and, uh, of my neighbors that are here, a number of them didn't even live in Wakefield in 2015 to potentially be notified. So I, I think we have to be mindful of the fact that Wakefield is changing, it's growing, there's lots of new families, there's lots of interest in the town, we only moved here in the middle of 2015, and I, I don't think that, you know, because Candace moved here last year, that her property rights or her interest as an butter is any less, just because she missed a part of the process. And I think, I, I sincerely regret not becoming more involved in this when I first got these notices, and, and, you know, I can't go back in time, but I think, giving people a hard time for deciding to be involved late, I, I don't see how that's productive. And, and I would submit that this is a significant enough project, that perhaps if projects of this magnitude come before the town in the future, you, you might consider a very expansive notification, making it a town-wide issue. Um, because certainly the, the traffic issues, the, the infrastructure issues, I, I mean, if it costs more to maintain our water mains because we need to go around this project, we all pay for that. Um, and, and, you know, some comments were made that maybe this wasn't viewed as significant, so, you know, there wasn't a, a lot of worry that, that the town wasn't hearing from a lot of people, and, and I think it's just because people simply didn't know. Um, but in terms of, of, of our comments as a group, and my own thoughts, I, you know, obviously, it's going to be inconvenient to have this kind of construction outside of my house, but, but my concerns are really from a human health standpoint. I have two small children, our house is probably set back about 25 to 30 feet from, um, Salem Street, currently their bedrooms are in the front, they might not be going forward. Um, you know, and I, and I, I am not an epidemiologist, um, but, you know, in, in looking at, at the data, we've, we felt that we couldn't conclude that there was, was no risk here. Um, and, and I would love to get more information, to feel more confident that there isn't a risk to my family, or frankly, to other people's families whose houses are way closer to the street, and depending on what side of the, the road the project is on, it may not affect me, but it might affect my neighbor, and his house is real close to the street. Um, you know, and even requesting a variation like New Salem, well, that's great, and that puts it on those people. So, you know, I, I, I would ask if, if any consideration was, was given to routes that just really don't involve many homes at all, either existing right-of-ways, or even going along the highway. Nobody lives on 128, obviously, it would cost a fortune, it's obviously about three miles longer to get to Woburn on the highway, but, um, it, it seems like that might be something that would be worth looking at. And I really do, it, I mean, it doesn't seem like you're, you're poised to make a decision as a board on this and recommend this right now, but I would strongly encourage you not board on this and recommend this right now, but I would strongly encourage you not to make any decisions tonight, and continue this, and have further public process, and, you know, I think as more people are becoming aware of this, you know, we'll try and be helpful and articulate in our questions, and I, you know, I don't want to be not in my backyard about this, but I do, you know, want to feel comfortable that this project is safe and that the town is, you know, getting everything that it's due in terms of, you know, having to deal with this inconvenience of this. So, thank you very much.
Bill Robinson, 185 Broadway.
Hold on one second. I think it's fairly safe just to say that, just me personally, I haven't spoken with anyone on the board, but it seems like we're not going to make a decision tonight, just a wild guess. But...
My name is Bill Robinson, 185 Broadway. I really only have one question and one statement. Was this project coming through Wakefield no matter what? I mean, could you have said no at the very beginning? It doesn't sound like it. It sounds like it was coming through no matter what.
My understanding is that ultimately, the Energy Facilities Siting Board has jurisdiction over where these projects come.
Correct. So we were, the only decision we had was where it was coming through, what streets it was using to transmit the wires.
Our biggest concern at all times was where is it going to be in Wakefield? And at every hearing I attended, that was the only concern of other towns as well. So the concerns we've heard tonight about EMF and other issues, I never heard any of that voiced at the siting board.
Right. And the statement is that when, versus town government, versus city government, if you don't have the input from people, it's up to you to make those decisions. It's, you know, I know it's a town government and we're supposed to have the decision, but if no one's coming to you, it's up to the elected officials to make those decisions. And you have. So, but because it's all coming through anyways, which is really the big picture.
Sorry.
It was coming through no matter what. What street it comes down is technical, but it was coming to Wakefield one way or another. Correct?
We haven't made any decision.
No, no, well, I'm just saying.
Just to be clear.
Steve may have mentioned earlier that no one came forward, which is typical city government, you know, comes forward. It's just that process. But if no one came forward, doesn't mean they don't have interest. It means that that decision was up to you.
Right. So I guess, something that's been running in the back of my head is, you know, I guess we're supposed to decide for people ahead of time, this one sounds really big, we should sound a special alarm, or, you know, I don't mean to be too facetious, but it's like, you know, which, then it puts it on our case, well, how come on that matter, you guys rang the special alarm, but then on this one, you didn't? We think you should have rung, it's like, you know what? Hold on, just, seriously, just, there are ways, and there are statutes and rules and laws about how we notify people about what's going on. It is the baseline, you could do more, but man, I don't want to get into picking and choosing which ones, because guess what? As soon as there's one that people think should have gotten the extra, the extra lights and shine on it, it, the accusation immediately comes back, you guys buried that one. How come you didn't make that one the big one, like you made the other? Right? It's just a slippery, dangerous slope.
I understand.
Just so you know, so everybody gets the same notice on every matter, and then people can decide if they have a concern, they can, they can call us, they can call Steve, people do it, they walk into his office, they can show up at meetings, and they do and they don't. And like I said before, it happens and it doesn't happen for, I don't know why. Sometimes there are big things that nobody shows up on, and there's little things that everybody shows up on, and everything else is kind of right in between.
It could be a death in the family. Who knows what the reason is?
No, but that's one person.
All I'm saying is that if there's no one putting in input, it's up to you to make those decisions.
Look, it's always, it's always input or no input. It's up to us to make the decision. We can listen to every word tonight or no words.
My first statement was, the big decision wasn't yours. It was coming through Wakefield anyways.
This is not our decision.
Correct. That's the big decision.
But I think on the issue of process, and I think it's an important issue, it seems that, for whatever reason, there was a flawed notice system here. I think we, the general sentiment is that communication should have been better on this to get the word out. So I think that's something, I think it's an opportunity for us to go back and review and determine what can be done differently next time, so that notice is provided in a more succinct, you know, expansive way. So this is a takeaway for us. And I think as a board, but also as a town, that's important, because I'm not convinced that, you know, we have to kind of pick the winners and losers in terms of what's going to be controversial or not, but I am convinced that, at least in this instance, it sounds like a lot of folks didn't feel like they had the information about what was going on in, either contemporaneously or at all. And it sounds like some people weren't notified, I'm not pointing fingers, but some people weren't notified. All right, so now we know. So how can we fix that going forward, so that the next time this issue or any issue comes up, we don't have this same sort of rather last-minute, you know, rush of concern, which I respect and appreciate. I share that. You know, I was not as tuned into this issue as a resident either. I didn't receive notice on this, certainly. I'm somewhat nearby, but not in a butter, certainly. So I think that this is something, I think it's an important takeaway we have here, and it does speak to process. And I think had we had the notice go out in a different way, perhaps the process may have unfolded differently than it has now. We are, we find ourselves where we do now, so now the question is, how do we go forward under these circumstances? And I think that's what we're all trying to do collaboratively. I like the idea of being able to set up some sort of town hall forum, so that we can have folks that are, who maybe can't be here tonight, but are interested now, as word gets out more on this, let's hear it. I understand that National Grid can then understand what our concerns are, and then we can tailor something that better meets the needs of the residents here. Not just those impacted, but of the town as a whole, because I think that's an important, you know, point as well. So let's have some takeaways from this.
Cynthia Davis, 26 Houston Street. I want to apologize first for my exuberance earlier. This is something that I think a lot of us feel passionately about, and you can add my name to the list of someone who didn't get any notifications living within the two-block radius. I want to speak to, well, my background first of all is in psychology, I'm a developmental psychologist and a researcher, and so I want to speak to some of the statements that Dr. Valberg made. He said that there was no mechanism that links EMF to childhood cancer, and with a simple literature review that I did over the weekend, and it wasn't a Wikipedia search, there's no identified mechanism. That means they don't know what the mechanism is. Also, Pediatrics, the Journal of the American Academy of Pediatrics, has said that there is a well-established correlation between EMF and childhood cancers. You also cited animal models, and it's well-known that animal models don't necessarily generalize to human beings. So I think that the science is uncertain. And I agree with Mr. Dombrowski, that we should have an independent investigator expert look at the actual data that are out there. That's all.
Steve Dicker, 14 Houston Street. I just want to correct one piece of science as well, to back up that. So we talked a lot about blenders for a second, and I'm not disputing that blenders don't give off EMF, but I don't sleep with my blender on. I mean, that would be dangerous for multiple reasons, but the point is with this, the buried lines, you can't get away from them, right? If you're in a butter, or if your child goes to Galvin, you can't escape them, right? But I do want to, I do want to ask a serious question to the companies. Michelle mentioned earlier, you know, whether or not it was considered to bury them under 95. Was it? And what was the conclusion?
That was, that was actually requested that we do a study by, I believe it was Stonem, to, so that we don't have to go through their town, and we did review it, we spoke with, we actually met with the Mastod several times. It was really advocated by some of the local congressmen as well. We did study it. The, I guess the conclusion was that, from what I recall, and I'm just going back a couple of years, because we did this before we actually even filed, the conclusion was that it, for many reasons, one of them being that you would be impacting traffic on 93 and 128. That was one. And also Mastod may not necessarily grant us the rights, because if there are other routes, one of the conditions for Mastod granting rights on a highway such as I-93 or 128, is that there are no other feasible routes. So we had that, we were prepared to actually have it reviewed and addressed by the FSB, and Stonem actually, in one of the responses, said, could you please, the FSB, look at this route? And the FSB never actually reviewed it, and I took that to mean that they knew that that was not a feasible route. We were prepared to provide the information in the report that we had prepared, but the FSB never saw that as a viable route, I think primarily because it is a huge highway and a huge interchange, and Mastod was not highly likely to grant us the ability to actually construct.
Okay, but I mean, I guess 95 is just one of many routes you could potentially, you know, conceive wouldn't go by residences or a middle school. Is it too late? You know, I'm new to Wakefield, but is it too late to look for those options? Because I mean, I'm, you know, I don't think anyone in this room wants to take that risk.
Right, so that, again, that goes to my question. It is too late. It's, we've been through the FSB, and we presented the preferred and what we call a notice alternative, based on all the input and based on our scoring and our routing. So now what the FSB has before them is the route that we're now, that's why we're before Wakefield now, because we're expecting that this route most likely will be approved by the FSB. So that basically makes it too late to go back. But feel comfortable that the FSB, I mean, routing, as Steve Mayo mentioned, that was heavily, that was one of the key issues during the proceeding, where the FSB looked at the routing and analyzed the routing, and there actually were, when this is at least presented by Stonem, to the alternate route that they wanted to go straight up 28, and that was fully vetted. The FSB chose, and like I said, chose not to look at the I-95 option, and they would have, it was requested to, and they would have if they thought it was a viable route. There are a lot of re, Dave Clinch can speech the score, how many routes did we look at?
Over three dozen, with variations. There was many more.
And there's considerable testimony on it, considerable discovery. We had probably about 900 information requests, a lot of them on the routing, so it's fully vetted through the FSB process, and that's one of, it's called a siting board for that reason. They want to make sure that we're citing it properly. And the unfortunate thing is, we've been through that process now.
I mean, my understanding through reading the siting board is that Winchester was actually able to get you to reroute through hiring the attorney and the independent expert.
We haven't rerouted through Winchester. That's Eversource, but I don't, we didn't reroute, unless you're, I'm trying to think, was there?
The difference between like the Washington Street, Cross Street, and Green Street.
... that Winchester got, but that was also due to multiple other reasons. It didn't have any, it, there's multiple reasons why that small variation was actually done, and that was also, again, Eversource, Eversource Town, different, you know, parameters that they were working with, and also the fact that the town had intervened and whatnot, so. But there were more, it was more than just, you know, because they, they had a lawyer that there was a change. Because the change has to be viable, it can't just be, we don't want to go down this street.
So I think, you know, to the board, as a new resident, you know, I feel completely powerless, right? In any of this, to stop this from going by our house and middle school. Guess that's it.
My name is Eric Garfield, I live at 173 on Broadway, so I am in a butter, and essentially I'm finding out that I'm now living in a house that's going to have a high voltage line within 20 feet of my front door. And I did not know that when I purchased the house. My wife and I moved into town, we knew the street, it was an older street, very few families. Within the last four years that we've lived there, there's probably seven to eight families with kids younger than ours, and I can tell you with certainty that people in our street did not necessarily understand that when we were receiving a postcard in the mail, that we were having a high tension, and I know it's not a high tension, but it's a high voltage line 20 feet from our front door. Our frontage, we don't have big front yards, we're essentially almost more of an urban street, and I'm extremely alarmed to hear all of this. When I'm receiving a postcard saying that there's some sort of a project, I'm figuring they give me an alert that they're doing streetwork. Nothing more. Okay, we're going to go for a few weeks of having, you know, bumps and detours, and I'm extremely upset about this. And I support fully anything that we can do about squeezing out some assistance to have our own rights heard. And I also support fully, I don't know how we can necessarily do it, and I'm telling you, I knew less about this from what was sent to me, or perhaps was left in my mailbox, than what my wife told me she heard on Facebook. And that's concerning, too. I don't believe anywhere in any of the documentation received, I know I received something registered mail, I believe it came from the consultant's firm, I had no idea what that meant. I went and showed up at the post office, signed for something, opened it up, and it wasn't from National Grid, it was from a consultant. I didn't know what they were telling us. And quite frankly, it's not good enough to send somebody a letter and say, if you have any questions, contact us. I don't know why you're contacting me. So I support fully anything that the board can do. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Aruda, I live at 5 Bugly Lane. I just moved to Wakefield a year ago in August, so August of 2016. I did not get any notification of this in the time that I've lived in this town. I just found out about this project on Wednesday of last week, when my neighbors, who are a butters, got letters. My property is one parcel from Salem Street from the behind, so I don't know why I wasn't considered a butter. I've listened to everybody, and everybody's pretty much asked all the questions and brought up the concerns that I have. But the other thing that we've kind of alluded to, the Galvin Middle School isn't a butter, so every person in this town who has a student that's going to public school should have been notified. That school isn't a butter, who notified everybody who's going to go to school there? The other question that I had was, you know, I listened to Brian McGrail this morning, or this afternoon, he mentioned that he had to have a signature of all of the board, because they wanted to put a second floor and a liquor license in a restaurant that was, I think, 500 feet from a school. But we don't have to get notified of a power line that's going to go underneath 500 feet from school? And if we could just go back to the, the slide that shows the, what the town's benefits are going to be, there's something about a steel gas line that's going to be replaced? I don't, how old is that? We don't have gas on my street, so I was under the assumption that that gas line was fairly new that went down, maybe it's back one more.
I'm going to ask the DPW director, you know how old that gas line is? It's steel, it's old.
I do not know the age, but I can tell you that being steel, it's old.
Old. Because, I mean, we don't, we have, you know, we don't have gas on Bugly.
And it needs to be replaced, it will be replaced one way or the other.
I, it was under my assumption, I was told that Houston just got a gas line in the last few years, so I didn't know if they tapped off of that line from Salem, and if they had recently sent a line down Houston off of a really old line, that just didn't make sense. It sounded like some part of it might have been...
Part of the, and you'd have to ask the gas department, but I do know that part of the gas line on Salem Street has been upgraded to plastic, the other part is still steel. The steel part's an issue, because it could be corroded, could have, if you notice, gas odor, that would indicate that there are kind of pinholes in that line, and so...
So part of what they're going to replace is Salem Street that's been replaced, not...
They're not going to replace the pot that has been, they're going to replace the pot that hasn't been.
Okay. But I appreciate everybody listening to our concerns. You know, I understand that it's late in the game. I don't understand if you're at a meeting with towns that represent, you know, Winchester was there, Stonem was there, if one person from Wakefield was there, didn't anybody raise a red flag to say, maybe nobody knows about this? I don't know what else to do. I know that there's been some, you know, comments made about what we could do differently in the future, but you also do have to consider new residents to this town. There's nothing on the town website, there's nothing that I knew about this until my neighbors told me. So thank you for your hard work, and we really hope that you'll listen to our concerns moving forward.
Hi. I know I already got to ask a question, but may I ask a follow-up tax question? Could you please go back to the slide where you talk about the revenue to the town and the taxes? Yeah? and the taxes? Yeah. So is the fifty-eight point five million dollar infrastructure investment, that's your, that's your lines? Yes. So the tax you're paying is on the value, the perceived value of the equipment that you're putting in? Yeah. And who values that?
The, what's the assessor's?
Okay, the assessor does, okay. So after the, so you're going to depreciate down the amount and then therefore reduce the tax or rent you're paying, right? Is that what's going to happen? I'm just trying to unders, I'm trying to understand how it works, that's all.
So their, their, how they depreciate the asset on their books is completely independent activity.
Okay.
Relative to our assessor and our assessment. So if we decide or not decide, if the market indicates that property values are going up and that the value of this asset has increased, the assessment will go up, just like, you know, every year the value of your house gets assessed by the town and it moves one way or the other. If they choose to depreciate it, right, I, I, I think, and, you know, my, my guess is if I'm in their shoes, my best bet is to say, here's your tax revenue, we're going to depreciate the asset on our books. It's probably going to go down over the next few years, because guess what? I just know how these things work. If you come in and say it's probably going to go up, somebody will stand up and say, you're lying, you're tricking us, it's going to go down, you're going to depreciate it. So you come in and you say, hey, look, this is where our starting point is, we've calculated the first five years because we have visibility to that. We're going to be depreciating it on our books, so we're going to call it a lower value and, and hope for a lower tax rate. They're going to hope to pay less taxes, just like we all do. But the reality is it will fall on our assessor to go out and make an assessment of the value in the future.
Okay. It just makes me a little nervous to think about that they're going to pay, you know, that they could, that it could depreciate the value down, so twenty years from now, maybe they're only paying two hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's what I'm getting at. Like, they're using our land regardless of the value that their, that their equipment is, and it's not going away, so I don't understand the reason why they wouldn't.
In my mind, I think the value would go up. Certainly as the demand for utilities go up and the demand for power goes up, as we keep talking about, the extra lane on the highway, it's, when demand goes up, the supplier makes more money. So the value of that asset, I would expect to go up. I think it's conservative and proper for them to come in and suggest it might, the value might go down, so they don't overstate the, the tax benefit to the town. That's my opinion.
Yeah. I just, it just feels to me a little bit like, oh, we're going to give you all this money upfront and then, oh, we're going to sneak it off over time and then after thirty years, we're not going to pay you at all. I just want to make sure that's not going to happen.
Steve, is there any different?
No, but I think every business property owner in town tries to depreciate their property with fifty, so this is no different than anybody else.
But they don't, they're not a business owner in town, really. They're a big company.
It is business property.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Carolyn Morale, one thirty Montrose Ave. I live directly across the street from the access road at National Grid. So I have a question first about the route. Is there any reason, rather than coming straight down Montrose Avenue, that you can't come behind the Irving Station across your own property right up to the substation?
Sure. Well, one, one of the reasons is that that right-of-way is wet, has wetland and a stream within it, so it makes it more challenging to get approvals. People, you know, we get pushback from folks for wanting to do that rather than being in the road.
I thought public utilities were exempt.
It's not impossible, but more commonly, we would be pushed to be in the road rather than in a wetland.
So I, I thought public utilities were exempt from a lot of the conservation laws?
Nope.
No?
Right. There, there are certain maintenance activities that are. A project like this is fully subject to all the laws.
So I guess the second part of my question then would be about the blasting that will have to be done on Montrose Avenue to come down. So when I built my home in nineteen eighty-nine, in order to put a four-inch sewer main, PVC sewer main, I had to pay to blast the street. And there is no as-is plan because the sewer line is actually a foot higher than it should be because there was so much ledge. And in the minimal amount of blasting that was done, it knocked out all the water service for the street. And I expect, since you are going twelve feet down rather than a few feet, that that's going to be an issue for you. And with all the disruption, disruption, the, some of the health issues that people have raised, wouldn't it make more sense to go behind the Irving Station and straight up to your own substation? And then, okay, and then I guess the last question I have is about the sound. And I fully endorse the select person's suggestion to have an independent consultant on this project. When your project was put in, and we lived there long before that, we were assured that there would be certain sound levels. And there were orders of conditions issued by all of the boards with respect to those sound levels. Well, the sound boards that are there today is because they were not adhered to. And we were told when we, the neighbors expressed concern, not only was there a hum, but people down on Briarwood and McKenzie could put their hands on their walls and feel the walls vibrate. So the zoning board of appeals, in conjunction with National Grid, did mandate certain sound boards. They've mitigated it, but they're not enough. Even now, you hear the hum in the middle of the night. So frankly, we need more sound walls, not more transmissions. So I think I'd advocate for my neighbors on behalf of an independent consultant for the whole project to make sure the representations go through the way they're supposed to in terms of the actual design and product. And also maybe consider another route where National Grid could use their own property rather than having these concerns, blasting. And I guess I'd also want to know what protections you have for the homeowners, because I really think we sit on bedrock and you're going to have to blast to bring it down Montrose Avenue. Thank you.
I don't agree with the blasting.
Please.
There's no blasting in the contract. We have no intention to blast it.
Nobody ever does. Nobody had, nobody, nobody had any intention of blasting when my sewer line came down.
If we, if we remove rock, it'll do with jackhammers.
And so I guess my question following up with that would be, if you get to a point where there is more ledge or there's more cost because of the man-hours for jackhammering rather than blasting, there should be some sort of order of conditions that prevents you from then changing. And then I guess the other part would be, we're talking about the public way here tonight. Across the street from my home is the access road. So when you get onto your own access road, what would be your plans when you hit bedrock going up to the substation? And does the board have jurisdiction to, does the board have jurisdiction to also enter an order of conditions for your access road once they're off the public way? Because that is certainly important to all the neighbors.
Yeah. I think agreement at this point is no jack, is no blasting.
Correct. That's in the letter.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So may I just then ask, that we're talking about the public way tonight, so in order to bring that line up to the substation, does the board also have the power and jurisdiction to say that there cannot be any blasting going up the access road once we're off the public way?
I think by agreement. I don't know if we have that authority, just like on your property.
It just would be something to consider.
Something to consider, absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah.
Derek Gary, one fifty-two Broadway. I have a radio voice, you can turn this down a little bit. I just want, just a little background on myself. I consult with a global energy company. So I know what you guys do. I know what you guys go through. And without putting blame on anybody, my experience has been that if you have a project like this and you don't have a lot of people in the community putting up their hands, something is wrong. Something is very wrong. People have not been properly informed. Now, for me, I moved here in September twenty fifteen. This was a fait accompli when I came in. But one of the things that's fascinating to me about this is, two years later, we're on the verge of getting approval and we still don't know what streets this is going down. I don't know if this is moving down Albion Street. I don't know if this is moving down Broadway. I know that as a new property owner in Wakefield, I would prefer not to have high-voltage lines running underneath the house that was built in eighteen sixty. But my reason for coming here, my reason for buying this house, was it is, it was a historic house in a very scenic part of the city where there seemed to be next to no opportunities for new building. And I understand we need progress and I understand power lines and these are important things. But I also really have to question the outreach here, both on the part of this company and on the part of the board of selecting. We can get a flashing sign out in front of Seven Eleven to tell us that there's going to be water main cleaning, but in the two years that I've been living here, there has not been a single public meeting, a single public hearing, any butter input whatsoever until tonight. As I said, I work in this business. This is unheard of. This is unheard of. I'm involved in situations like this in other communities right now. And they're reaching out to people on a weekly basis. They're buying newspaper ads, they're setting up websites, they're holding town meetings, they're calling people. What this looks like, I don't want to speak out of turn here, I don't want to accuse any, I don't think anybody in this room is operating in bad faith. But what this looks like, from a certain perspective, is that we have a project that is going through four communities. Three communities have put up a lot of fight about this and they're dealing with one company. We have another company that walks into Wakefield. And Wakefield says, yeah, plan looks good to us, we'll sign off. And by the time it actually gets to the people, if I understand what I'm hearing here tonight correctly, those decisions had already been made. The routes were already laid out. Where was the public input at that point? It's unheard of. It's unheard of. And I understand you guys have the right. The state ultimately will come here and ram this down our throats, whether we want it or not. But that does not excuse not involving the people early on. And some of the response from the board tonight, just, just to say, we didn't get any complaints, so we didn't do anything. We thought everybody was going to be in favor of this. I don't know anybody anywhere in this country that wants high-voltage lines within a hundred feet of their house. They may be necessary. They're absolutely necessary. But you've also got to have public input. And the public should have been brought in much, much sooner on this. And if there is any possible way at this point to get public input and to delay this process, at the very least, to delay this process until we know what streets this project is coming down, that should be done. Thank you.
Brownman Delavobi, I live at eight Cyrus Street. I think through all of the very eloquent people who spoke tonight, I think it's very, very clear that the prong of this process that's broken or completely missing is the public prong. And I agree with previous speakers that because people aren't raising their hands, maybe that should have been a red flag. Well, maybe people don't know about it. So I agree with Mr. Nebraska that this is a, a learning moment and that certainly something that I think the board should take under consideration from here, from here on out. I do want to say that the town of Winchester, the town, not the town's people, as in grassroots, put up a quarter of a million dollars to advocate for their town and their residents on this project. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of town money, and they did that willingly, and that they included the town's people every step of the way. And the town's people responded. Mr. Chairman, may I ask, can you read what it says on the agenda tonight for this portion of your agenda? How does it read on the agenda?
It says, seven ten, National Grid, grant of location permit under MGL C one sixty-six for underground cable project.
Okay. Does that mean that you, you had intentions of voting on this tonight?
Depending on the outcome of the public hearing.
I'm sorry?
Depending on the outcome of the public hearing.
I see. Okay.
You do?
I do, yes. I just wanted to make sure that I understood what, what the wording was on the, on the agenda, so that I was under the impression that you guys were ready to take a vote tonight. That was my impression from the agenda. But I just wanted to let you know that the other towns, maybe we can take a little note from them as to keeping the, the people informed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think this is, I think we need to end it at this stage. It's ten thirty.
I just want to say, the notice that we got last week.
Right.
Looked like junk mail. There was no return address on it. It arrived Wednesday. It looked like junk mail.
Do you have copies?
I do. It's in my bag. I will get it. And I want to say one more thing, and maybe Mr. Stinson can answer this. We had heard from someone in the town of Stonem that some homes will have to have electric pumps to deal with sewerage because it's going to be disturbed by the huge box that's going to be concrete in the ground and, of course, all the other stuff that's in the ground.
We do not plan on any electric pumps.
Yeah.
No. No. As was mentioned, the plan is that this will go underneath our utility lines, and we've reviewed all those plans.
Okay.
Just, did you, excuse me, did you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, I'm George Stinson.
Okay, last, last question.
John Kingsley, I'm on twelve Flanders Lane. So I'll have a son in the, in the, in the middle school soon, so I consider myself in a butter. But one of the things that wasn't talked about is, we all know our property values are going up. People who are buying homes, people who are paying their property taxes, there's a lot of homes that would be affected by a very high-voltage line going by their property. The impact upon that, on their value of their homes, is a significant impact on somebody's life and their household. Not just, obviously, the obvious ones we've already discussed about medical and health concerns, but, you know, the value of our homes could be affected by this. Who wants to buy my house if I happen to be the guy who's thirty feet or twenty feet from this high-voltage line? I think it's been pretty clearly stated that not a lot of people may be interested in that if they know about it. So, thank you.
I think we ought to continue this, I guess. That was a lot of information tonight. I think we need to continue this further. I think the board, I mean, I'll put it up for the board's decision, but I think that too much information tonight to absorb to make any decisions tonight is my suggestion. We postpone it for a further date with also open public hearing to continue this process.
I, I think before we have our next, it just seems logical, before we have our next official hearing on this as a board, that the public, you know, that information session, town hall meeting, forum, whatever you want to call it, occur between now and then so that people can be heard and hear responses, including us can hopefully glean some further information out of that as well. So maybe that's something, again, that could happen in the next thirty days or so, or, you know, by early first week of December or something like that. And then also, I don't know where, I think your suggesting, suggestion about hiring an expert is a, is a National Grid-funded consultant that we hire as a town, and we should, probably should do that. And in the interest of time, I would propose that we maybe just delegate that to a subcommittee that could, even if it has to meet with notice, could set up a meeting, a meet in town hall someday and just maybe kick around some, some thoughts about who to hire. And, and by doing it in the form of a subcommittee who delivers notice for its meetings, people here can pay attention to what's going on, as you are now, and, and offer up your suggestions. Maybe you know a good consultant that we should consider, or some particular criteria to consider, or criteria to avoid even. So get some input on that and maybe get somebody retained to participate in that public hearing, you know, on behalf of the town as well. Might be, might be a smart way to move forward, so.
Do you have a suggestion?
I don't know where that's coming from.
Would you like to send that in?
Just hold off for a minute, we'll figure it out. It's just, just my, just my suggestion right now that, that we retain somebody, which I think can be done very quickly, that we get a meeting scheduled in the next, like I said, less than thirty days and have our follow-up meeting scheduled thereafter, so. I, I think part of that is we need folks on that side of the room right there to nod and say that that sounds like something you can fund. Maybe I.
We know you have the money.
No. I, I think in fairness, you probably have to, it's, I would, I don't know if you if you can just say yes on the spot, or you have to go somewhere, but we can maybe leave here, assuming there'll be some concurrence on that, and we can proceed, as though that will happen.
We do have to run it, go back and run it, but, I guess at least, having heard everything, I think my suggestion would be that we do fund it, but I do have to get approval for it.
Sure.
So, we'll, we'll go forward with that working understanding, knowing that we still need confirmation from you, but we'll assume that to be the case, and proceed accordingly. Thank you.
So, anyway, that would be my suggestion, and...
Okay. So, would you be able to get back to Mr. Mayo on that? Is that, at least as a focus point? Would you be able to contact Steve, Steve Mayo about...
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, just, just be sure, just be able to contact point that's clear, okay. So, I think if the board would like to, I'd suggest that we have a motion to postpone and continue this educational trip, because there's a lot of things that have been uncovered tonight, that I certainly was unaware of, as well as most of the board, probably.
Well, I think we, we should probably make a motion to form a, a subcommittee that does the hiring, right? Let's, let's just do that first, I don't know who would like to be on that, I'd suggest you would, Ed. Seems like it'd be important, I don't know who else.
I'm probably Ed.
You wanna do it?
Yes.
That's two. Is that it?
I've got no travel left of this week.
Okay. So, I, I move that we create a subcommittee to look into retaining a outside consultant, create the requirements, and assuming, and also work out funding with the town administrator, who will get it ideally from, from National Grid, but as long as it's, like, work out funding with the town administrator, that the, the subcommittee has the authority to select and retain a consultant to look into this matter on behalf of the town.
Second?
Second.
And, and those three are in my motion. Ed, Tony, and Ann. There you go, and there's the second.
Are we all in favor of that, vote-wise, as this...
Yeah.
I assume that was the case.
Continue this public hearing to a date you don't have to do, you could continue it again.
Right. So, why don't we, so, we need to look into when, when we think a public forum could happen? Again, I suggest that the public forum not be a, a public hearing, right, or, or something, it's, it's unofficial, if you will, and allows for more open discourse, but we probably ought to play a role in, in mediating it, and moderating it, and making sure that it goes well. But, I don't know if we just delegate that to Steve, perhaps, do you wanna help?
You have a public hearing that is now opened, so you do need to, to, to continue that to a date certain.
Yeah, and then talk about the forum. Well, that's what I was looking at, is, when can we do the forum, then we can know when to perhaps continue the meeting, too, so. So, when are our selectmen's meetings, in December?
In December, December eleventh, just one.
All right, so why don't we, why don't we continue to December eleventh, and just so everybody knows, the, the process there is to continue it to December eleventh. If the forum hasn't happened, we will literally sit down at the December eleventh meeting, open up the public hearing, and continue it to another date, and then close the hearing. So, don't be alarmed by the date being too soon, or if you hear that the public hearing is scheduled December fifteenth, don't be alarmed by that, okay? I, I would make a commitment, and I don't know the rest of the board, we wouldn't take any action until after the, the public forum occurs. Here, that'd be the plan. So, if you see any, any odd, you know, something odd about the dates, you know, have faith that we'll, we'll continue, so. So, I guess I'll, I'll make a motion that we continue this public hearing to our meeting on December eleventh, at, do we need a time?
Yes.
Yeah, at seven-ten PM.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so that's a hundred percent. Do you want to...
No, you've continued it, so you're...
Continue, right, so you're closing, okay. Do you want to just continue with the rest of the...
Agenda? Oh, yeah. We just thank them, they can vote, we'll be in touch.
With regard to the public forum, I think we can put it on the town Facebook page, when we, can we do that? So, the town, the public forum will be on the town Facebook page, appears everyone uses Facebook, based on the last few days, in addition to whatever other notice legally we have to put on, so just, you know, keep an eye out for that, so you can all come.
On the website as well.
Yeah.
On the website, yeah, absolutely, on the website, yeah.
Can I just ask the butters, that if you do have questions, you kind of, you know, put them amongst yourselves, and circle up a list, so we don't have the same question asked multiple times?
Yeah, to that end, as we said earlier, Sherry and Steve both have been taking very diligent notes on every person who spoke, their address, and what issues they raised, and we'll share that, it's public record, anyway, but we'll share it certainly with National Grid, so that they can, we can make sure they've got a complete list of all the issues that came up tonight, and they can address them in what I would assume to be their opening, if you will, at that hearing. So, hopefully, you know, accelerate through the discussion, and, and then get to another bona fide Q and A.
Okay, so we'll continue the Board of Selectmen meetings, minutes now. So, we're gonna continue the public, so, Steve, do we have any public...
There was no public participation, other than that.
Which one? This one? Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, can I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October thirtieth, twenty seventeen, the regular board minutes?
The move.
I'm sorry, could you, were you still doing our meeting for the other staff?
We're trying to get out of here, too. You can leave, but leave quietly.
Thank you. And you can, we're all gonna stay here, but library gives us.
Thank you.
I move we approve the minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, a hundred percent, no nays. Okay, moving on to license and permits, we're looking at a one-day legal license application for Adam Hembro on November eighteenth, twenty seventeen, at the Americal Civic Center.
I move we approve the license.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hundred percent. Okay, personnel appointments, request to advertise for members to the council on aging due to resignation, there's one opening.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request to advertise for poll workers.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request to advertise for the second member to the retirement board.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Request from Wakefield Republican Town Committee to appoint Marcy McCauley as register of voters.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wow, that's getting worn out of you. Okay, so, presentation action item, request to accept and expend a gift, or gifts to the Lucius B.B. Memorial Library in the amount of nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars and fifty cents from various donors with thanks.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hundred percent case, anyone didn't know that. Request to hold MDA boot drive on November twenty-second, twenty seventeen, from eleven AM until one PM.
Come on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Warrant review and signing, Mr. Longo, signed number, I'm sorry, which one?
Lots of bills were signed.
Oh, wow, hold on, hold that thought, Tony. I didn't see that.
Okay, we, we did have one more, the request from the YMCA to sell their Christmas trees and wreath at Hall Park. This was posted, but came in after your...
Oh, it wasn't on my list.
That's why I didn't have it, you have the old one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sorry about that. Tony, back to you, warrant review and signing.
I signed lots of bills, they were all...
Okay, warrant sixteen, warrant seventeen, and warrant eighteen.
Yes.
Okay, let's start with Maureen. Matters not anticipated by the chairman within forty-eight hours of meeting.
You can tell everybody they could let this go if they wanted to.
And you can let this go if you want. You can pass.
I'm going to pass tonight.
Ann, anything you wanna talk about?
Super quickly, because I'll forget next, forget next thing.
Sure.
I talked with Representative Proter, Froder, with regards to the lack of accessibility at both Wakefield and Greenwood stations, which is a big concern, I faced it when I was on my cane, trying to jump up on the train. It is on, MBTA is aware of it, the state legislature is aware of it, it is on the list of what needs to be done, so I'm gonna follow up, just to see where we are on the list.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Ed?
I just wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, I know that that's coming up soon, and, and I think this was a good opportunity for the board to understand the public's concerns about process, and I know we do a good job, but we can do better, and I think we'll, we'll do that going forward. Thank you.
Tony?
I'm good.
I just have like five or six pages of notes, and I wanted to go through some pressing items, but I, I guess I'll just...
Yeah, let's take your plane tomorrow to Canada. I have nothing.
I move we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Steve has one more thing to say.
I'm good.
I'm fine.
Hey, Mr. Vice Chair, nice job. That's a tough meeting to run.